... and get to the city council agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I so move this motion.
Second.
Motion from Member Donahue, second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Ex parte communications, seeing and hearing none, public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda? Be two minutes of speech for this.
Okay, I would like to welcome our new interim city manager, Mr. Holgerson, James, or Jim Holgerson. Welcome.
Thank you.
To the city. But I want you to be aware that you've heard a lot of talk since you've been here about how wonderful Emeryville is. And, you know, you would expect to hear that, I suppose, from the city council and other government officials about how wonderful the place is that they are responsible for. But I'm here to tell you there's another side of the story. The other side of the story is the truth. Because what you've been hearing is essentially what it is government propaganda. Now, you have heard about how Emeryville is moving onward and upward. We're doing great. We're improving livability, for instance, with parks. Emeryville is adding parks, and we're doing better by the citizens with parks. Well, that's what the government officials here say, will tell you, and tell us constantly. But is there, I ask, is there a way to know that? They tell us that, but is there a way to actually know that for sure? And I say, well, yeah, there is. There is a way to know. You can measure it. It's measurable. You can measure the acreage of parks, and then you can measure the population of the city of Emeryville. And then you can see how that ratio changes over time. And when you do that, you'll see that Emeryville is getting worse. Every year since the late 70s, vis a vis parks, for instance, gets worse every year. Some years gets big increase in getting worse, and other years only gets worse by a little bit. But Emeryville is dropping the ball when it comes to livability, vis a vis specifically parks, bicycle connectivity and bicycle commuting, being able to commute by bicycle, just being able to use a bike in Emeryville. It's demonstrably, it can be measured, that Emeryville is getting worse over time with regard to bicycles. In virtually every livability metric, Emeryville gets worse over time. And you're hearing a lot of propaganda. You should know this.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to comment at this time? Seeing and hearing none. The consent calendar. Member Martinez, do you have an amendment, I believe?
I do. So I would like to move the consent calendar with a minor correction that shows in the roll that the chair is Scott Donahue, the vice chair is John Bowders, and the council members are Diane Martinez, Ellie Medina, and Christian Pats. And with that, I would move the consent calendar.
There's a motion with those amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion from Member Martinez, and a second from Councilmember Pats to approve the consent calendar as amended. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:15. The meeting is adjourned. Time is 17:15. Call to order the Community Development Commission of the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. Take a motion to approve the final agenda.
Move approval.
I second.
There's a motion by Member Martinez, and a second by Member Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Ex parte communications for members, seeing and hearing none, public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda. All speakers have two minutes.
So continuing on for Mr. Holgerson, for your benefit, livability issues. Like I said, you're hearing a lot of overheated talk about that. It's to be expected. I understand that people would, will tend to exaggerate when they're in charge of something. But again, it's important that the truth be uttered. The truth is not generally uttered in this room about this subject, about livability, so, you know, I'm the spoiler here. How about, like, for instance, our urban forestry ordinance? We have an urban forestry ordinance where we are supposed to be protecting our existing street trees. How are we doing in that regard? Well, if you listen to the staff, they'll tell you we're doing great. But is there a way to know? Are we actually doing great? Could a person find that out for sure? And the answer is, yeah. We can find that out. It's measurable. We can find out how many trees have been saved as the UFO says they're supposed to be saved versus how many have been cut down. And when you do that, what you'll find is that the UFO ordinance, for instance, is a joke. It's, I think, two trees have been saved since the ordinance has been enacted in 2006, I believe, and it's over 80 have been cut down. Remember, putatively, the idea of the UFO is to save trees, our trees. So any way you measure it, it's a failure. And yet, the people in this room will tell you otherwise. And so, is it, I think it's important that the truth be uttered. Now, as I said, it's rare, would be rare to find a city, you're new to the city, it would be rare to find a city that would tout its failures. But with that in mind, I think it's important that the truth be actually in the ether and be actually told. And that's why I'm here today, to tell you about this city that you are involved with here. And I understand it's important, you can make an argument, a cogent argument about how we need cheerleading to get everybody on board, but not at the expense of the truth.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you.
Consent calendar, are there any motions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Medina, second from Councilmember Martinez to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:18. I adjourn that meeting. And at 7:18, I call to order the management of Emeryville Services Authority. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
To move.
I second.
Motion from Councilmember Martinez, second from Councilmember Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue.
I got it.
Bowders, sorry.
Aye. Public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda? All speakers have one minute.
Continuing on for Mr. Holverson. How would we know if we're doing a good job, for instance, saving our single-family, stock of single-family residences in what are called the, the general plan calls our, the zones of stability, or the areas of stability? You know, the stability, if you go to the dictionary, you look it up, it means, it doesn't mean demolish. It means actually the opposite of that. Stable means not demolish. And yet, that's what's happening to the homes in the zones of stability with total regularity and predictability every time. And the staff, every time, recommends that the homes be, in question, be destroyed by the developers who want to do it. And so, the general plan protections for the homes in the zones of stability that the taxpayers, I mean, I'm sorry, that the residents wanted, are being completely subverted by the staff and by the council. And so, that's another area. The homes of stability. We are not saving the homes as we are claimed to be doing, as the document says we should be doing. It's just the opposite. Again, it's measurable. Don't take my word for it.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you very much.
Take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Martinez, and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:20. I adjourn that meeting. And I call to order the City of Emeryville Successory Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move. Do we approve the agenda?
I have a motion from Member Donahue.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Martinez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Ex parte communications, seeing and hearing none, public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda. Speakers have one minute.
Okay, continuing on for Mr. Holverson. Another subject, for instance, bicycling. I mentioned that earlier. Is there a way to know if we're doing well, doing well by the residents vis a vis protecting the residents' ability, and citizens' ability to use bicycles in our town? Well, the general plan says we are, and if you talk to your colleagues, your new colleagues here, they'll tell you, oh, yeah, we're doing great. But again, is there a way to measure it? Well, yes, there is a way to measure it. And if you, and you've used just standard measuring techniques, you'll find that we're doing horribly. For instance, 45th and 53rd Street Bike Boulevards are not supposed to have more than 1,500 vehicle trips per day on them. And if they do, we're supposed to engage this in traffic calming measures. Well, the City of Emeryville has known for more than 10 years that those two boulevards specifically, for instance, have been in violation, and no traffic calming is forthcoming. They're not even talking about it. And so, you know, the general plan that's vetted, democratically vetted by the people of Emeryville is not being...
Thank you for your public comment.
Followed. Thank you.
Take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Pats, and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The time is 7:22, Madam Clerk. The meeting is adjourned. At 7:22, I want to call to order the city council of the City of Emeryville regular meeting. This is the regular agenda most of you are probably here for. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Medina, and a second from Councilmember Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Special orders of the day, 4.1 interim city manager, James Holgerson. Oh, you've kind of gotten an introduction to some of our city.
I have.
Yeah. Want to introduce yourself? And, I don't know, is Lisa, Lisa, you're going to introduce him as well? However you guys want to do it.
I think I'll let Jim go first.
All right, Jim, you're up.
Okay. Well, Jim Holgerson, and I've been in public service for a lot of years. I had great opportunities to work in nine different communities over those years, working with councils and staffs and community, all with their visions and dreams, and trying to do my best to help move the ball forward, if you will, in those communities. I want to say to the council, to the mayor, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for this opportunity. I am really enjoying it. Yeah, there's lots of challenges, but that's what we thrive on. Really, I've been getting to know the council, getting to know the staff, trying to catch up to you all. And each day, it's building in here, my little database. And there's clearly a number of issues that we're all working on. I'm excited about being part of that. And I look forward to working with you all and moving the city forward and providing for as smooth a transition as possible for the new manager when he or she comes in.
Thank you. And on behalf of the city council, Jim, I want to welcome you to the City of Emeryville, and thank you for all the years of public service you've provided a number of communities across the country. And we look forward to the expertise you bring in those areas to complement the work we're doing here. Thank you for being here. Item 4.2 is an introduction of our new deputy city clerk, Ty Pham.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It is my pleasure to introduce my new deputy city clerk, Ty Pham, whose first day was actually July 2. And we'd delighted to have coaxed him up here from Orange County. And we think he's really going to love it here in Emeryville. Ty has worked in various municipalities over the past four years throughout Southern California, including the cities of Westminster, Rancho Cucamonga, La Cañada, Flint Ridge, and Cerritos. And prior to his work in local government, Ty was the Director of Administration for the Society for the Promotion of Japanese Animation, a nonprofit that organizes the Anime Expo, North America's largest Japanese animation and pop culture fandom convention. Outside of work, Ty is married to Long, his partner of five years. They have two dogs, Ryuki and Jax. And Ty enjoys food and politics. And when he is not at work, you can find him at the local gym, or getting goodies for the office, a fact to which I can personally attest. So please join me in welcoming Ty as the newest member of the city clerk's office, and I think he'd like to make a brief remarks.
Thank you, Ty.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Honorable Mayor and council members, good evening. I am fortunate to be serving the community of Emeryville. I look forward to working and everyone in the days to come, despite being a SoCal kid, growing up with the Lakers, Angels, and Dodgers. I look forward in being part of the Emeryville and the East Bay family. And last, but not least, go Lakers for getting LeBron James.
Maybe a very, very short tenure in our community, but it was nice knowing you, Ty.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Pats?
Yeah, if I may. So Todd, I'm on your side. I'm a fellow Southern California transplant, and we'll talk anime.
And as, did you have a comment?
A point of personal privilege, I think that's the first time that LeBron James has ever been mentioned in these chambers. Thank you.
This is Draymond Green's.
And as Vice Mayor, as Vice Mayor Medina knows, that's only because I did not, I did not want to be persecuted for being a LeBron James fan.
He's an Ohio boy.
I went to high school in Cleveland, so what do you do? But welcome to our city. And first day he was here, he brought cookies for everybody, which is a great way to win hearts in City Hall, especially if you want to keep council members close to your desk all day. So, welcome, Ty. We look forward to working with you. Item five is an announcement of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk?
All I'll say on that is that for the vacancies that we were not able to fill with tonight's appointments, we will do a new recruitment and a new posting for those vacancies and hope to fill those within the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is council member special announcements or reports on meetings in attendance. Member Pats?
None.
Member Medina?
No.
Member Martinez?
None this time.
Member Donahue?
No.
I just have one to report, which is, I was appointed to the Bay Area Air Quality Air District Board, and had a opportunity to go to Hartford, Connecticut for three days as a member of the board. I've been appointed to the Refinery Oversight Committee at the air district, and I have been getting an education in particulate matter and how to properly test and regulate the air around refineries. And it was an opportunity to work with some of our colleagues in other communities here in the Bay Area that are concerned about air quality, and I look forward to bringing some of that expertise to promoting air quality in Emeryville, including tonight. So with that, item seven is the city manager's report. Mr. Holgerson?
No report at this time, except I'm having fun and learning.
Great, thank you. Ex parte communications for items on this agenda this evening. I'll start with Vice Mayor Medina.
None. Or I received an email regarding the final item, which is, what's it called? Yeah, 12.2. I received some communication on 12.2.
Okay. Can you just specify generally from whom?
Oh, from a variety of local businesses in the cannabis industry.
Okay. Member Pats?
The same.
The same. Member Donahue?
I think the same, yes.
The same. And Member Martinez?
I received that same communication, and it was from Tony Garcia, representing East Bay Therapeutics, Berkeley Patients Group slash New Leaf, Golden State Cannabis, Kikoko, Kiva Confectioners, Versagenics, and Sunderstorm. We also all, I believe, received emails from, regarding item 12.1, from Amanda Gutzwiler, from the American Lung Association, and a resident from Dublin. That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I have the same disclosure related to item 12.1. We also received an email from the American Cancer Society late today, I believe, as well, about item 12.1. I've received a number of emails from residents, in particular at the Watergate complex. I've had two meetings at Watergate regarding the smoking ordinance, where between 50 and 70 residents participated in the conversation. And on item 12.2, in addition to the emails that Councilmember Martinez outlined, I had a meeting with Nassir Azimi from East Bay Therapeutics in person. Okay, that concludes disclosures. Public comment for the consent agenda, or items not on this agenda? Public comment is limited to two minutes. This is general public comment.
Okay, I think the mayor owes everybody an explanation. Why reduce the time from three minutes, which has been traditional, to two minutes? I see an empty house here. I don't really see any reason to do that. And I invite you to explain to everybody why you reduced it by a minute. It doesn't seem to be, seems to be an attempt to not foster citizen engagement, instead to quash it down. So I think you should tell us why you wanted to have just done that. But lastly, to the new city manager, Mr. Holgerson, the interim, there is a, this town right now is embroiled in a scandal, and that is the police station. We had a major, $3.7 million remodel at the police station back in 2012, and no public fire egress was provided. Now, that's illegal. State of California says that. The city, is it finally sort of admitting that now that, yeah, it's wrong and illegal, and they're talking about fixing it? But you should know, and everybody watching should know, I've, for more than three years, I've been telling various iterations of this five-member committee, their body, about this violation there at the police station. And we, there has been no action, except for some talk. So, to the people of Emeryville, and to Mr. Holgerson, if you hear of any government officials, and in a public way, stating that Emeryville might, for instance, values public safety, and that, you know, that's something that's important to the city, that by definition is false. And we know that, because if the city cared about public safety, they would have dealt with this, instead of ignoring it for three years. So if you hear anybody saying that, you know that that's a false statement, because they've known about this violation, it's a major violation, for more than three years. It's been there probably since 2012.
Thank you for your public comment.
They've known about it for three years. Could you please tell us why you limited the time?
Other members of the public who wish to comment at this time may do so. Seeing and hearing none. Before we move to the consent calendar, I just, I'm remiss in making one announcement on behalf of the Community Services Department. So, the annual dive-in summer movie is at the ECL Pool, which is located at 117047th Street at the ECL Complex. It'll be July 20, 2018, begins at 6:30 PM with activities and an open swim. And the movie, which is The Little Mermaid, begins at dark. The vice mayor will be hosting as Ariel, the mermaid, at the event, and I will be Prince Eric this year. And if there are only 155 spots, and I promise you, it's going to be well worth the show, but you must be a child to attend this and see the mayor and vice mayor as Disney characters. So my, my, don't tell them that. Stacy Thomas can be contacted. You can also find it on the city's website, and there is an online registration. Spots are reserved and honored until 6:45 PM. After that, they're admitted to people on a first-come basis. Please join us. Okay, with that said, the consent calendar. Is there anybody who wishes to pull items from the consent calendar for discussion?
I would like to pull 10.7.
Okay, we're going to pull 10.7 from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there other items that people wish to pull?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 10.8.
10.8 has been pulled from the calendar. Are there other items people wish to pull? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for all items that have not been pulled, which would be 1 through 6 inclusive, and 9 through 17.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Pats, and a second by Councilmember Martinez to approve items 10.1 through 10.6, and items 10.9 through 10.17 inclusive. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Those are approved. We'll begin with 10.7. Member Donahue?
Okay, this, this item has to do with a new computer-aided dispatch system and record management system. And, you know, I look at the amount, it's $293, I mean, excuse me, $293,000. It's a big expense. And if we get this, I can see, we, you know, you described some needs about it. But is there anything you could tell us in a measurable way, how much it's going to improve what we currently have, in a measurable way, so we can say, going forward, well, what we had was this, and is, are we going to improve what performance items, by how much?
I'd like to invite the police chief. If you could use the podium so that people can see you, and can answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So, good question. How are we going to improve? The system that we purchased in 2016, in September of 2016, is called the Spillman CAD RMS system. And just for everybody's benefit, a CAD RMS system is a computer-aided dispatch and records management system. So it takes information in via the dispatcher and calls for service, stores it, and helps us manage that information in records, producing, doing crime analysis and such data. So this system was purchased in 2016 to replace the antiquated system that was in place for many years, and very much outdated. The, so we signed the contract, bought the system. By May of 2017, we were supposed to go live, meaning everything was in place for that system that was outlined in the contract. The go-live date had to be delayed because they didn't deliver all the elements of the system. We eventually were able to go live in June, and, but we only went live partly. A main component of a CAD RMS system is called the CLETS component. It's the California Law Enforcement Transmittal System. So this is a portal, and it's a secure portal, through which we can receive information, criminal justice-related information. We can also push information out. And it, it is a portal through which local, regional, state, national criminal justice information is delivered to an agency. Every law enforcement agency has it. Every vendor for a CAD RMS system knows this is a critical component of that system. Spillman failed to deliver us what they promised with that component. Not only that, but they failed, and to this date, have not delivered two other modules. One is the Spillman Touch, which is touchscreen capability, very common in today's technology. We still don't have that. And we don't have the mobile ABL system, which allows us to know where a police vehicle is on a map. It is inconsistent in tracking that. A lot of, a lot of concern around public safety, and also, to the extent that we cannot rely on the information that's coming through our portal, it could very well result in the erroneous arrest of somebody who is not the person identified in the information provided. It could lead to, and I believe has led to, a misidentification of a stolen vehicle. All these things carry with them some very serious liability for us, when you're speaking about serious offenders, et cetera, and people misidentified in that vein. So, a year after the purchase of this, I believe it was a full year, we have an email from Spillman to Michael Parenti, our IT manager, where they admit that there were problems with this, and it was not up to standard, their product. So we've been back and forth with Spillman, with considerable drain on our resources and our time, trying to get a system that doesn't have all the capabilities they said it would, to deliver the service that we need in order to provide service to the community. It's very cumbersome. The fixes that they make are cumbersome. Can they, so a good question would be, can they fix the problems? They could, yes, fix the problems, but you would have a cumbersome system, not a streamlined system, a system that would still require, for example, when a dispatcher is taking in information, there are different ways for a dispatcher to enter the information. And currently, they have to take, I'm just giving you an example, of nine steps versus one step. So a touchscreen versus, they have to go to different tabs to get to what they want to do. Very time-consuming, not how a system like this is supposed to function. We have done due diligence with this company. We have been in contact with them, sometimes several times a day, weekly, there. And, and here is what I think happened. Right after we signed the contract, that company, Spillman, was purchased by Motorola, a very large company. And some of the people we were dealing with were relieved from their jobs in that purchase. We were, didn't have the same level of service, and in fact, we didn't have the same ability to contact people about issues. I believe we were emailing a person for a long time who was no longer there, but we had no way of knowing this person didn't exist in that position. So lots of problems that really have left us with a system that is unreliable. And in my business, we need to have a system that is reliable, both from a data point-of-view, records management, as well as how we're interacting with and who we're interacting with on the street, and what we are doing with the information we receive. So that is the short version of all of the problems with this system.
Member Donahue, do you have follow-up questions?
Well, well, it sounds like maybe we should be not getting our money back from the original purchase. Maybe our city attorney should be pursuing that.
Yep. So, we, yes. So we have two parallel processes here, and I'll let the city attorney's office address that issue. But yes, that is something that is in process. And we have not paid for some of the modules. We've refused payment. They did extend the warranty because of all the delays at one point. So we've, we've done, we've held back on payment of invoices to a certain degree. And so, we should seek remedy from this company, absolutely.
And so, going forward, if we approve this, can you give us some kind of metric and say, how say how much this will save your department in labor and some metric about quality improvement? You know, something we can say, okay, before purchase, after purchase?
So after purchase, all of those issues that I have just described will disappear because the product that's in the staff report is RIMS, it's Sunridge Systems. It is already in use with four agencies in Alameda County. We've visited Livermore and looked at all aspects of it, all functioning, from property and evidence to investigations and dispatch and patrol functions. It is a very robust system that does everything that we would want it to do. And I have, I have full confidence in RIMS. I know RIMS from my time in Marin County. They have a very solid reputation.
Yeah, thank you. I've, I've heard enough for me to say that we could, that's pretty credible measurement of before and after that she's given us, so I'm, I'm satisfied.
Okay, are there other comments or questions? Member Medina?
I have a question. So when identifying Sunridge, I appreciate that you went out and did your due diligence, looked at it, used it in the field. Did you do an RFP or solicit bids from other vendors?
So when we were looking at replacement in 2016, RIMS was the top contender with Spillman. So we did do our, our review of available products for law enforcement departments, and RIMS, they were just, they were neck and neck with Spillman. And Spillman just offered a couple more bells and whistles, and they just squeaked ahead, and that's how we ended up with Spillman. But RIMS is a fully functioning product and tried and tested in Alameda County. So any of the nuances that exist in the, the CLUTS switching system have already been resolved by RIMS with these four agencies. So we are getting a tried and trusted, and tested product.
Are there other questions from members? Member Martinez?
How much did we spend on Spillman?
I think we're in the vicinity of 300?
338.
338. The other, so in addition to requesting our money back and not having paid those invoices, the maintenance contract for RIMS is $20,000 less annually than the Spillman's. So there's an ongoing savings there. Cumulus of Lee, in five years, we recoup $100,000.
Do you have other questions? I have a couple of questions, but I want, I want, it turns on something you answered for Councilmember Donahue, which for the city manager and city attorney, it's been raised in the context of a parallel process, but I'm curious, I mean, how much money have we actually expended? I've heard we held some back, we're not paying some invoices. How much have we expended versus not? And should we take a look at the potential for our litigation track here in a closed session before we make an action out of this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, and I want to frame this in that as a new guy here, I'm still catching up to all the hard work that the staff has been doing. But I think, I think the points raised by the council merit really perhaps stepping back a bit from a decision at this point in time. I think, A, B, we are, in fact, I've been reviewing on the side here, the letter of breach of agreement that we'll be sending to the vendor, so we can begin, begin that process to assess what in fact that breach is, what in fact, what possible remuneration we may get in return. I think we've still got about $80,000 left on the contract, for example. And that would provide more information for the council in terms of where we're, where we are legally and financially with this current software vendor. The second piece that really, like, a little more time to work on is, what does this transition look like? Going from the current vendor to a new vendor? And what do we have for a structure around that? And then having our dialogue regarding the breach of contract, what is the vendor willing to do to help us with that transition? And the third question really is, and I know the chief and our IT folks have, have got a framework around this, but is, in this new implementation, assuming the new vendor coming in, what's the framework around that to assure that we're going to have success to answer some of those questions regarding what will work better? What's the cost benefit of going to that in terms of our ability to perform better with respect to that very important service we deliver, which is 911 response? And of course, the safety of the officers and getting reliable information, as well as our, safety of our residents in terms of our response? So we would suggest, to give us more time, since that letter has not gone out on that second track, that we, we defer this to the 24th, where we can come back to council, may have a closed session to talk about what that litigation looks like, and I'll defer to the attorney if he wants to speak to that, as well as additional information on what the go-forward looks like.
Mr. City Attorney, do you wish to add anything to those remarks?
Thank you, Mayor. The, no, I will, I will just leave it with what the mayor, or I'm sorry, what the city manager has provided. No, that's, that's fine. So I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have anything you want to add or say about any of that?
Obviously, I don't want to delay any further because we have a system that's unreliable. And for me, that is, it's, it's critical that we fix it, and we've identified a system that can do that. So I am fully supportive of seeking breach of contract, and we have been having conversations about that also. But it is, it is critical for us to serve our community in a way that has integrity and protects our citizens and our officers, and, and that's where we're at.
How many, how many of the incidents that you mentioned where there's like misidentification have we had in the last two years since you put this in?
Um, I don't, I don't know how many, but I do know that when a dispatcher runs a name, that it is very cumbersome to figure out who the return actually is. The return meaning the information that comes back and the, and verifying that information.
You say return, so like Mike Smith is reported, and like which Mike Smith is it? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, and is this the real Mike Smith? And, and just then not being able to get information. So there's getting information that's unreliable, and then there's the inability to get information or to send information.
Okay, and then to the remark that we could wait two weeks, is that a material harm to us if we just have two weeks to review it, as you suggested?
I'm supportive of whatever the council's desire is. I personally don't want to wait any longer, but I do want the city manager to have full confidence in how we're moving forward. It is a lot of money. I want you to understand the magnitude of this problem, and I also want you to have confidence in the system that is in the staff report before you. It's easy for us, because we've been working on this for so long, we know every, we know what we're talking about, but, but I want to make sure that you do too. It's important.
Okay, Member Donahue?
I don't perceive any problem with, you know, potentially getting money back by us proceeding with just the new system right now. And the chief gave us enough measurement for me for going forward right now with purchasing of the new stuff. Unless the city attorney feels like, no, we could do better to wait a little bit, and our leverage would be greater with making the old company pay. But, you know, if there's no, no leverage advantage, I think we might as well go ahead with, with the purchase now.
I, I would prefer to provide you any potential litigation strategy in a closed session, so I'm not prepared to speak on our options relating to the current contract with Spillman in this open session. And instead, I would recommend that I bring a closed session item to you to speak to the particulars of the Spillman contract in a future closed session.
So, Member Donahue, in light of that, I would like to suggest that the more prudent thing would be to understand all the litigation options and whether or not we can obtain what we call specific performance of the contract from the contracted party, who I hear is not doing their job. And so that could involve different things, and although I very much appreciate the need to move something expeditiously for public safety reasons, I'm, I'm going to get to you in just a second. I think my, my current state of mind is that we give them two weeks to collaborate as a unit and be on the same page. But, Member Pats?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Member Donahue was saying and frame it a little differently. Having used software, when it doesn't work, it doesn't work. It, I think we're at the place where we need to replace this. We need to give our officers the best tools they can have to make sure they do the job in the way that they do. And I think recouping our money on the bad investment is a separate issue from putting the right tools in the officer's hands. So that's where I stand on this. I understand the need to wait, and I look forward to speaking with Mr. Gina in private, but I just want to be sure that we're thinking about what the officers need as well.
Could I restate what, I, I just, you know, I, exactly what, what Councilmember Pats is saying, that it just seems to me that proceeding with the new system, I think, doesn't seem to be connected to the old system.
And that's where I disagree, I think. I think that they are connected because we expended a lot of money, and on no fault of our department, we're being asked to spend an equal amount of money less than two years later to fix a very expensive system. And I think that because it's of a closed session nature, it can't all be discussed what the options are here. And so just speaking from the professional experience as a lawyer, there are options that we haven't discussed. And so if the rest of the council wishes to move forward, I will, no, I don't, you have your own franchise here and may vote, but I'm, I will not support moving this today because I don't think, after two years of it not working, it makes sense to do it today versus two weeks from now if we can just have that full meeting. That's my personal preference. But, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one note before the council takes, decides on anything tonight, that I would ask you to remember to take public comment before you make any.
We took public comment when we called for the comment on all, all items in the, because this is a consent calendar item. We called for public comment on this item.
Okay.
Yeah. We've already had public comment, Mr. Carpio. Are there other questions for the police chief? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we continue this item to July 24th.
I second the motion. Madam Clerk, there's a motion by Member Martinez and a second by Mayor Bowders to continue this item to July 24th. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye, because it doesn't matter.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. We'll, we'll resolve this on the 24th.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment to our city manager? I think going through this process, you, you may have a clearer understanding of our comfort level with what's on consent calendar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10.8, Member Martinez, you pulled this item. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the amendment and city manager, authorizing the amendment and city manager to execute contract number with the State Department of Education Office of Child Development.
Yes, so essentially, this increases the amount of subsidy we receive from the state from $170,000 to $240,000, and allows us to receive that money into a specific account. And I just wanted to ask staff if this affects our city subsidy to ECDC, or if this is just for additional students that weren't budgeted for previously.
It will help with our subsidy because we're receiving more revenue than we expected with the state contract due to actually over-earning our contract. We were able to enroll more students, which was one of the recommendations that our consultant gave us and our representative with the state contract, so we were able to do that this time around.
Good news. All right.
Is there any discussion on this item?
I, one more question. Do you know how much this will lower the amount that the city provides us as subsidy?
I'm sorry?
Do you know exactly how much this will reduce the amount the city provides us as subsidy?
We're still working out the numbers. It still depends how our projected numbers for fee-based revenues would come in, but I would estimate it could be somewhere between potentially $70,000.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions on this item?
No, I, I will move the item.
A second?
There's a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve item 10.8. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Onto public hearings. Item 11.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville granting a waiver from the noise ordinance to Arrow Sign Company on Saturday, July 21st, 2018, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 5:00 PM for the installation of two titanium high-rise signs at 2100 Powell Street in the city of Emeryville.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I propose that we have a, an abbreviated presentation or waive the presentation?
Let me, do members have a problem with that?
No.
No. Are there members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Just show of hand, so I know how many people are here for this item? None. I will accept a recommendation to waive presentation at this time unless there's a wish by staff to present. No? Okay, so it's a, as written, it's a proposal to waive the noise ordinance for one Saturday in July to install the two high-rise signs, and the installation process is described adequately in the staff report. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:57. The public hearing is now open. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item have three minutes to speak on this item. This is a public hearing on a sign. Do you wish to speak on the sign?
Yes.
Okay, please come to the podium. You have three minutes.
The, the material used on a sign sometime interfere with the reception of telephone or whatever. And so perhaps if the sign would be made out of a composite material instead of aluminum, it will help. So this is something I'm talking about experience. It's something that, this is a matter in a reflector of the satellite, like the satellite that they made in Mountain View that project the radio wave, the short wave, to the reception, like on a police department, for instance, the location of the reception may be offset with the satellite that is sending the emission. And this, this may be a fine tune between the, the reception and the transponder. And it's a, it's a radio wave communication, and all the trouble that she described may just come from position of the satellite. And, and it may not be correct because we have no way to, to send a signal for the rocket to move the satellite, but maybe another satellite may take over and correct the emission. And so that will solve part of the problem, if not all the problem. That's all I, that's all I know. As far, I work for the satellite company, so I know. And it's waved to the terrain.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:59. The public hearing is closed. I'll bring the item back for discussion. Is there any member who wishes to discuss the item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion from Councilmember Pats and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 12.1 is the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville replacing, sorry, repealing and replacing Chapter 29 of Title V. Before we begin, can I actually get a motion to read this ordinance by title only now?
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Councilmember Martinez to read the, the ordinance by title only. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing and replacing Chapter 29 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Smoking Pollution Control, Sequel Determination of Exempt pursuant to Section 15061b 3 of the California Sequel Guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. The title having been read, Madam Assistant City Attorney, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a brief presentation this evening. However, if you'd like to move on, I'm available for questions. And also, I'd like to say that Tamiko Johnson, who is with the county, is also available for questions, so we can go forward with the presentation or just skip to public comment and questions, whatever.
My, my preference, I know there are members of the public who are here for this item, my preference would be that we do a brief presentation if the council is okay with that.
Okay.
For the benefit of the public, so they know what we have in the final ordinance.
Okay, so Chapter 29 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Smoking Pollution Control. So here's an overview for tonight's presentation. I'll briefly touch on prior City Council direction. I'll go over a summary of substantive ordinance changes and also touch on the memorandum of understanding with the county related to of understanding with the county related to education and outreach for enforcement of the ordinance. On September 20th, 2016, during a study session, the City Council directed staff to work with the Housing Committee to conduct surveys and outreach regarding community preferences for smoking pollution control measures. City staff partnered with the county to develop that survey, and the county was actually the one that did the outreach and conducted the survey, and the City of Emeryville was simply one city among many of the cities in the county. And in previous meetings, we have presented those results to the council, so I'm not going to go over them again. But overall, the results were that the community would like all types of housing to be smoke-free and then also it be free from all smoke, so it doesn't matter whether it's tobacco or And at the prior City Council meeting on this matter, City Council directed us to prepare an ordinance prohibiting smoking in all types of multi-unit housing and to ensure all smoke is prohibited. And also to conduct outreach to hotels to ensure that hotels are 100% smoke-free. The county did reach out to the hotels to confirm that they all have 100% smoke-free policies. And I did also email them a link to the staff report and notify them about tonight's meeting, and I've received no comment back from the hotels. And then also to work with the county regarding education and outreach for the proposed ordinance, because the idea is we want voluntary compliance. And so, to go over the proposed ordinance, it is structured as repeal and replace, but that's because we've taken the opportunity to do some cleanup, capitalize terms appropriately, remove some superfluous terms, but overall, it is the same ordinance as before. All smoke is prohibited, smoke from both natural tobacco as well as synthetic tobacco. The council had concerns about that last time, and we've reached out with Change Lab to make sure that the ordinance covers that. You'll notice that cannabis smoke is not covered by the ordinance, and that's because cannabis smoke is prohibited under state law, specifically Proposition 64. Hotels are 100% smoke-free. And smoking is prohibited at transit stops, which was also a request by the council. According to community preference, smoking is prohibited in all types of multi-unit housing. And multi-unit housing does include a house with an attached accessory dwelling. So, basically, if you have a shared wall, you're considered multi-unit housing and smoking is prohibited. Because we are partnering with the county for education and outreach, the county had requested other regulations in the ordinance to facilitate the implementation of the prohibition of smoke. And so, that would include landlords and homeowners associations are required to post no-smoking signs, that landlords are required to notify tenants and to include no-smoking provisions in leases, and that sellers have to provide disclosures that smoking is prohibited in multi-unit housing to future buyers. And the effective date of the ordinance is December 1st, 2018, and I'll get to that in a minute why it's a delayed effective date. And so, that's the summary of the changes for the ordinance. And also, before the council tonight is a consideration of the MOU with the county. We're not asking for the council to take action tonight. If there are no major changes, we can bring it back with the second reading for approval. But otherwise, it has gone through the county process, and there's no more major county comments, I think. So, I think we're pretty close to final. So...
That was that facial expression. It was, "Miss County, for just you wait."
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the MOU is there for council consideration. As I said before, the goal is to achieve compliance. We don't want to be penalizing people. We just want people to have smoke-free housing. And the effective date is delayed until the end of the year to allow the county time to conduct the outreach and education. And there is no cost to partner with the county. And with that, that is the end, and we are available for questions.
Are there clarifying questions before I take public comment? Member Martinez?
So, what is the state law? Does it speak to cannabis and multifamily housing?
So, state law says that smoking of cannabis is prohibited wherever smoking of tobacco is prohibited.
So, we don't need to speak to cannabis in our multifamily language?
No, not. This is something that Change Lab has advised the city on, and actually, one of the prior reiterations of the smoking ordinance had included, in the definition of smoke, included both tobacco and cannabis.
Right.
But Change Lab recommended that we remove cannabis because of the state law and Prop 64.
Okay. All right.
I have a clarifying question.
Member Donahue?
Yeah.
Are the no-smoking signs that are required specified? And are they huge, like 10-foot by 10-foot and hideous and could architecturally destroy our city? Or are they something that we could live with?
Well, so, one thing that the ordinance does create is the ability for the city manager to issue regulations so that we can deal with issues like the size of no-smoking signs so that they are not...
Okay.
...atrocious, yet they get their point across.
Are there questions to my left? Member Medina?
Just picturing a 10-foot by 10-foot sign, like in a park. I think we could redo all the utility boxes or something.
Member Patz, you have any questions?
You know, Member Donahue always throws me off my game. I really, I actually really appreciate that. One of the things I noticed in the ordinance that I hadn't noticed before is that it seems the city does not allow for designated tobacco areas, but we do for cannabis lounges. And I was wondering, is that something from the state or is that a holdover from the previous, replacing, the ordinance we're replacing?
I'm sorry, I'm not quite following your question. Designated areas for...
So, like a smoking lounge? And there was some more language on there. I'm sorry, I should pull up the ordinance and point directly to it, but there was a, it seemed to me when I read through the ordinance, the City of Emeryville specifically does not license tobacco-smoking lounges.
That, I believe, is a holdover of the prior smoking ordinance. We prohibited them, and I would look to our Community Development Director, Mr. Bryant, as to whether it's an allowed use under the planning code.
A smoking lounge?
Smoking lounge of tobacco.
Well, that would be, you mean, in conjunction with the principal use? That would be considered an accessory use. I mean, there's no particular planning regulations about it.
So, it's just in the smoking ordinance? Okay, I just, it was, it, one of the things, and I'm going to eventually probably end up supporting this, but we have really eliminated almost any place in town that you can smoke, which is the goal of the ordinance, but the reality is that a fair number of people still smoke, so...
Well, actually, that was one concern in working through the ordinance, where where could people smoke? And in one of the prior study sessions, what the public, and I know Tamiko could probably supplement my explanation, the public health solution is to be able to smoke in the public right-of-way because then you are walking and smoking, and it's a brief impact because you're walking along and moving along as opposed to sitting somewhere in enclosed space especially and smoking.
But the right-of-way, I think, is something we can't take away because that's in state law.
We, so, you can smoke tobacco in the public right-of-way...
Right.
...in Emeryville. However, under state law, you cannot smoke cannabis. So, the proposed solution from some of the other entities out there is simply we would not enforce the smoking prohibition, or it would be the absolute lowest enforcement priority of smoking cannabis in the right-of-way.
I think I've drifted much more than I intended. So, you answered my clarifying question.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I have one follow-up question from you based on, Councilmember Martinez is a very good question, I think. When we originally contemplated having the explicit state prohibition related to cannabis, like listing it in the ordinance, I think the reason we did it was that people who are going to read our ordinance aren't going to be reading the state law, and so, they're going to sit there and say, "Well, this doesn't cover tobacco." And my concern is that then we complicate the education component of enforcement because people go to the city website and read it, and it doesn't say tobacco, it doesn't say cannabis anywhere, even though that's the state law, and I get it. And we all get that for legal purposes, but a lot of people aren't going to get it. And I, you don't see that driving up complaints and having to constantly inform people that it's covered?
Well, I think that is where we would work with the county in terms of outreach, and part of the outreach is to make this legal document accessible, and you do that by saying really just basic statements like, "You can't smoke here. You can't smoke tobacco, and you can't smoke cannabis." The reasons why aren't necessarily important in that moment when you're saying, you know, you're posting your no-smoking sign. You're simply saying, "No smoking," and you have the little picture of the cigarette, you know, lined out. And you can include cannabis in that. So, and the county will be helping with that translation from, and the city as well, from this technical document of the ordinance into sort of practical, how do you implement? And that's what we do really with all of these ordinances that the city has adopted that are, you know, highly technical, like our labor standards or landlord/tenant. We come up with frequently asked questions. We come up with regulations to help make the ordinance more digestible for the everyday person.
Okay. I would like to ask Tamiko a couple of questions, too.
Sure.
But before I go, do other members of council...
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Do other members have questions about the MOU or enforcement? Okay, I do. So, for the benefit of the public...
Sure.
I know that we're not approving an MOU tonight, but we will have a final MOU before our second reading. Yes?
If there are just minor revisions that I can make tomorrow morning to get it on the 24th, then it will come with the second reading of the ordinance. If they're more substantive, then it would have to come back at a later time.
Because my concern is I don't believe in adopting something you can enforce, and so, I don't want to vote to approve this if, in the end, the county is like, "No deal" on this.
Oh.
I don't want to be in a situation where we've read and second-read and approved an ordinance that has and contemplates enforcement that isn't going to be delivered on. That's my concern.
Oh, no. We've been exchanging drafts, and I, I'm not, well, I know you've gone through your process.
So, County Council has basically approved the language, and our deputy director, who also with sign, has reviewed it and provided comments, which Andrea has integrated into the document.
So, we're expecting a finalization phase, not, we're not in a substantive negotiation anymore? Right? Okay. So, can you just explain how enforcement will look to the Emeryville resident?
Sure. So, I just want to be clear that Alameda County Public Health Tobacco Control is not enforcing any aspect of the law. Our role is really education and information to the public. So, we will make sure that we have a phone number and an email address that folks can email or call with any kind of complaint. That's part of what I'm looking to partner with the city manager's office and/or the police department on, to figure out what that process exactly might look like. But folks would call, we would take that complaint, we would then send a letter to the landlord, if that's the situation, or to the person that is being accused of smoking, letting them know about Emeryville's law and explaining what will happen if they don't comply. We will do that a couple of times, try to contact those folks on the phone. And again, this depends on the person who is calling in or emailing us having some complete information to provide to us, right? If two to three attempts do not work, that's when we will pass on all of the paperwork that we have collected and concert with the complainant and the person who's being accused of smoking to the police department. So, the details of what happens at that point, I think the police department would be better to share.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, my question for either the police chief or the city attorney is, are we simply following simple, the infraction code and civil code for, I could ask you, probably you've been working on this, is it just going to be an infraction and a civil code violation with increasing fines? Is that the process we're playing on using?
Yes. For somebody who's actually smoking, it'd probably be an infraction. If it's a landlord, we might be able to do an administrative citation instead. It depends on who's doing the violating of the ordinance.
Okay, but we'll use existing remedies under our code.
Correct.
We won't create a new code for that. Councilmember Patz?
And a follow-up to that, this becomes in our just cause ordinance, if someone is smoking, the landlord can then evict?
Provided the lease says that, you know, if the lease has the no-smoking prohibition in the lease, then yes, somebody could be evicted because it would be considered a breach of the lease.
And we are statutorily requiring it to be in all leases?
We are.
Okay. Are there other questions before I take public comment? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, I will open it for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak will have three minutes to do so. You may approach the microphone now. Mr. Carpio, hold on, I think we have, you're going to come up?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Williams. I'm with Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights in Berkeley, and on behalf of our members here in Emeryville, I do want to support this ordinance and to expand the smoke-free policy protections to both multi-unit housing as well as the hotels that are mentioned. Adopting a 100% smoke-free multi-unit ordinance really does have a broad public health impact for people in the home, especially children and seniors and people with health conditions. I do encourage you to update language that I think was referenced earlier regarding not smoking, not allowing marijuana smoking in dispensaries if they're located in mixed-use buildings where there might be attached residences so that residents in those properties aren't breathing any drifting marijuana smoke. We don't think, also, what was also mentioned earlier, we do actually encourage, from our organization's perspective, that marijuana be explicitly mentioned. Typically, the draft language that we provide to communities on a variety of types of smoking or issues is to include marijuana within the definition of smoking, and that is recommended for purposes of clarity and to eliminate any confusion by residents and property managers and anyone else in the community, to really be thorough about what's being discussed. Emeryville would be in good company by this. There's already 46 other communities in the state that have nice, strong laws that require all multi-unit housing to be smoke-free, so especially, it's a growing trend here in the Bay Area, and we encourage you to take action on this and appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public wish to speak?
Vertically challenged. Good evening, Mayor Bowders, members of the council. My name is Serena Chen, and I've been working in tobacco control for over 20 years. It's closer to 30, but I don't want you to think I'm that old. I wanted to say that 11 years ago, the first city in the world banned smoking and smoke-free housing, and that was the city of Belmont. And they all linked arms and jumped off this proverbial cliff, thinking that something terrible would happen, but nothing terrible happened. Something really wonderful happened. Cities all over California started to take them up and look to say, "Hey, no more smoking and multi-unit housing," because if it's dangerous when you sit next to someone at work smoking, it's dangerous when it seeps into your bedroom. I wanted to say that now, over 2 million people in California live in cities with smoke-free housing. And again, you'll be in good company. And I wanted to mention particulate matter because you've been studying it, Mayor. The electronic vapor is really ultra-fine particulate matter, so it actually lodges into people's lungs faster and more deeply. So, these are considerations when you hear people say that e-cigarettes are harmless. Well, they're not, and actually, the, how fine, and fine is not a good fine, the matter is, the more it gets into your body system. And I just wanted to say, the county, you're in good hands with the county. They've been taking complaints for years, and, you know, usually, it can be resolved through repeated reminders, information, and speaking to. Thank you for taking the time to get it right. I know that you've put a lot of thought into it. And by the way, AC Transit, I have a deal with AC Transit. Any city who says no-smoking at bus stops, AC Transit will put a no-smoking logo and your municipal code when they cycle in the change of schedules. So, they don't do it right away, but every time a bus schedule changes, they'll change it and put it into your bus shelters. So, you'll have automatic no-smoking signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to speak? Other members of the public who wish to speak?
I just wanted to ask a clarification. If I understood right, you said that smoking is legal in the public right-of-way. I think the existing Emeryville ordinance says you can't smoke within, is it 25 feet of a door or a window? I think that's right. Okay, so, now, will, is that going to change under the law? No, that stays the same. The cannabis by state law is prohibited in the public right-of-way.
Thank you for your question. Let me finish public comment. Other members of the public who wish to comment?
By definition, smoking is a product of combustion.
About to lose the microphone, could someone please help me?
And combustion, like in any engine efficiency, except for the jet engine, it goes, the exhaust go through a catalytic converter. So, the smoking ordinance here could be invalidated if people, when they smoke, when they exhale, if they exhale in a balloon, and, and I don't want to say cool it up, but exhale in a balloon, that shouldn't bother nobody. You see, it wouldn't bother nobody. If you, if you don't have any, any gas coming up like farting, then who would bother? You know, so, I wouldn't, I mean, all this prohibition and all that, just have people carry balloon, just like when they spit, they spit in a, in a jar, and then that do solve the whole problem for the asthmatic and all that. Thank you.
Thank you for your extremely creative suggestion. Other members of the public who wish to comment?
Mayor, councilmember, members, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Just to clarify a point about one of the previous speakers, marijuana or cannabis on its own track, we don't believe has harmful properties as cigarettes and nicotine do. In that context, we do agree with the fact that smoking marijuana wrapped with cigarette properties might be harmful, but just wanted to point out that cannabis on its own track is not believed to be harmful or addictive for that matter. Just wanted to clarify that. There's ample studies in that regard and clear distinctions between marijuana and its properties, in contrast to nicotine and cigarette properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to comment? You may comment as a public member.
So, really quickly, I just wanted to point out on the bottom of page six of the ordinance and top of page seven, just wanted to highlight for you all, I know you all have been in a long process of approving marijuana dispensaries in the city, but just wanted to point out that this language allows, sounds like it allows for onsite smoking at cannabis dispensaries. And so, I just wanted to encourage you, as you're looking at this comprehensive smoking ordinance, to ensure that any cannabis dispensaries that you all approve or give permits to do not have housing attached to them. So, that's all I wanted to mention there, because those two things can be in, in conflict. So, we want to assure that smoke-free, we want to ensure that all the housing that's multi-unit is smoke-free, and if it's attached to a dispensary that's allowed, allowing onsite consumption, that's a problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other members of the public? Seeing none? The public comment is closed. Bring this back for discussion, and I would like to begin with Member Donahue.
To that last point, I'm a little concerned. If you have a cannabis smoking lounge with negative pressure, meaning that the air is being pulled to the roof, kind of like how restaurants evacuate smoke from cooking, residents in the same building would not be exposed to that smoke. That's the principle of it. Whereas, a building right next door with a cannabis lounge, not directly attached because it's right next door, could be having cannabis smoke coming out from the same thing to a roof that people above in a balcony could be experiencing smoke. And so, in a way, you know, the, the way this is written is not nuanced enough to our urban reality, in my opinion, for that one aspect. That's a comment, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez?
I want to thank staff and the county and Serena and other stakeholders who have been working for so long on this issue. I know it's come back to us over and over again and seen a lot of iterations, and I want to hear Councilmember Donahue's concern, but also realize that if we were to consider cannabis use lounges, that we will be looking closely at their, their effects on their immediate surroundings, no matter where they are. That's, that's my comment. I, I don't think that we, we would just let anything fly within the boundaries of this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Pats?
I too want to thank everybody for their hard work on this. I do, as I sit here as the child of two smokers, and just how much I absolutely really hate cigarette smoking, not a big fan of cannabis either, I can't believe that I'm going to say some of the things I'm going to say. First, want to address Ms. Boucher's comment about the right of, about public right-of-way. It is 25 feet, you can't stand there and smoke, but if you are smoking as you walk by in that 25-foot zone, that is still permitted, as I read the ordinance and as I understand the law. So, am I correct in that? So, that's-
Heads are nodding for the people at home.
That's the loophole on that. But I, you know, I, again, I so struggle with both hating cigarette smoking, understanding the health risks, but also understanding the demographic of the people who smoke. And, you know, I, I really dislike passing ordinances that impact everyone but me, and so I always want to acknowledge that. I have a single-family residence, and while I'm within 25 feet of other restricted zones, I can smoke in my house and backyard, and I'm going to take that privilege away from other people. So, I always, I always struggle with that. And so, the only thing I'd like to see, I fully support this ordinance, but I'd love to see us repeal the portion that outlaws owner-operated tobacco lounges. I think if we're going to designate cannabis lounges, if an owner-operator wants to have a tobacco space, I don't think we'd ever grant such a permit, but I don't see the need to explicitly eliminate it if we're, just because we're looking at the whole ordinance. So, those are my comments, as confused and muddled as they are.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah. You know, I hear Councilmember Pats's concerns. I think there's been a lot written about how cigarette taxes mostly affect the poor and the fact that they've done a great job of eliminating smoking among the middle class and up, on up, and it's really hard to shake for people who don't have too many other options for luxuries to indulge otherwise. This, however, is not a regressive tax. It's something that protects people who might not have any other options. And, you know, as elder sister of somebody who is extremely medically fragile, you know, his living options are going to be limited, and so I, I hope that he lives in a city where he will be protected from next-door smoke in this fashion. So, that's always something that's in my mind, is, yes, there are people marginalized, but there's people marginalized on both sides of this, people who cannot move and have medical conditions. I, I think it's an interesting discussion about the cannabis lounges, and I believe Tamika, who's an expert on this, last time we talked about it a little bit, there's no state standards for negative pressure and preventing smoke from going into surrounding buildings. That's, I think, what you told me last time, is that correct? There's no, there's no current standards for engineering to prevent smoke through negative pressure or really giant vacuum systems from going into surrounding buildings. I do expect those things to start to become regulated, but I don't think that those standards currently exist for us to reference. And while Emeryville is often on the bleeding edge, I don't know if we need to create those standards for the state tonight, you know? So, I think I'm going to support it in its current form.
Okay, I have one question before my comments for the city attorney. On the bottom of page six and the top of page seven of the ordinance, it was pointed to earlier, it says pursuant to state law, smoking of cannabis or any product, whether natural or synthetic, et cetera, et cetera, is prohibited in all areas where smoking of tobacco. So, does our ordinance call out cannabis smoking prohibition, or adequately or not?
It does.
It does.
I forgot about that.
Okay, because I, I was trying to understand what you were saying in light of this paragraph. So, we do specifically say that cannabis is prohibited in all places, tobacco is prohibited under state law?
Correct, unless we have a permitted cannabis lounge. And if you recall, when we were going through the cannabis ordinance, we put something in the planning regulations that says that basically, if you want to have a smoking lounge, it has to be part of your conditional use permit. So, for example, we have two storefront dispensaries in Emeryville, and one of them, actually neither one of them allows smoking onsite. One of them has indicated that they wouldn't do that because they're not able to deal with the smoke in a way that would impact neighbors, and then the other permitee simply doesn't have any onsite consumption at the moment. They are also in a, they're not in a mixed-use building, and so the impact on housing isn't necessarily there like it would be with the others. So, the idea is by having them get a conditional use permit, we can address those site-specific concerns, whether it's smoking, whether it's housing that's actually in that building, or if it's going to be the housing next door that might be impacted.
So, my last question for you, is there a reason why we wouldn't simply, just to keep it clean, have a prohibition on it in multi-use buildings like that? Have a prohibition on cannabis smoke if that's, I mean, so that there isn't the possibility of an applicant who wants to have a dispensary with smoking lounge in a residential building? We don't ever encounter that public fray, you know what I'm saying?
I think it's because the technology could change, and I think the county has presented one opinion, but what we learned going through the cannabis RFQ process is that those in the cannabis industry might have a different take on technology. And so, the idea with this conditional use permit was to find a compromise where we can decide at the time, once we know the actual location and the actual technology that might be implemented.
Thank you. So, my comments are, I want to thank the staff, I want to thank all the advocates who have worked very hard on this issue, and I want to thank the county for your partnership and look forward to this MOU that will help us educate and implement, which is a much better word than enforce. As a small detail, particulate matter, I learned, absorbs, when it's fine particulate matter, it absorbs straight into the bloodstream. It does not actually make its way and lodge in the lungs, it actually is so small, it absorbs straight into the bloodstream and causes permanent damage to the brain and other vital organs in our bodies. And so, yes, it is, tobacco, smoke is a very serious problem. As someone who spent most of my childhood in my grandparents' home, where both of my grandparents and nine of my aunts and uncles all smoked, I have been overexposed to it most of my life, and having been away from it for so many years, I can't handle being in the presence of secondhand smoke. So, I know how valuable this is for people who live near it and who don't want it in their, their living space, and how important it is for children to have healthy upbringing in the freedom, freedom from smoke spaces. So, with that, I have no more comments, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion related to approving the first reading of this ordinance.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Martinez and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the first reading of the ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. First reading is approved. Thank you. Item 12.2 is the direction on potential revenue measures for the November 2018 election. Susan Shea.
The revenue task force consisting of Mayor Bowders and Councilmember Martinez, along with staff, work closely with our consultants to identify potential revenue options and to develop a community survey. Our consultant team conducted a poll last month, and they will present the results tonight. Adina Macago, a senior consultant from MBS, will provide an overview about the revenue measure study. Emory Kirby Goodman, a vice president from EMC Research, will present the poll results. Fran Mansier, a vice president from Muni Services, will present a cannabis tax rate analysis. Following the presentations, staff will seek a direction from the city council regarding potential revenue measures. Now, I will turn it over to Adina.
Sorry. So, good evening.
And you're wearing flats.
I am, yeah. Almost six foot. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for having us here this evening. Just as a reminder, we met, well, there's been lots of meetings over quite some time now. So, this presentation that we are having now is actually a second presentation. In December, we had a couple of measures that were brought before you for consideration. Timing of, of when to present those measures was something that was discussed. In order to address the city of Emeryville's rising operational costs and pension obligations, as well as some other revenue challenges, there was definitely a need for additional revenue sources. So, along with the task force and city staff, we've been putting together over quite some time now, some, some possible options for the cities. The Affordable Housing Bond was what was decided to go, move forward in December, and congratulations for a very successful measure. So, we now have that option in place. And then, before you tonight are going to be just the options of what you want to go after next, to also go ahead and, and supplement the city's revenue stream. So, the items you would be potentially considering could be a cannabis tax, a parcel tax, and a sales tax. You're going to get a lot more detail from the poll results and some analysis that was done by Muni Services, so I won't go into a huge amount of detail for you tonight. But I do want to just kind of remind you, as you're looking at these results and different kinds of things tonight, to consider what you want to go forward with in November. There's different thresholds that are going to be required by the voters for each type of tax. Your approval threshold for the cannabis tax would be a 50% as a general tax, and then a parcel tax and an additional sales tax would be the two-thirds majority vote. So, just in terms of looking at the survey results and your, your potential measure success rates, those are some things to go ahead and keep in mind. So, Emily's going to go ahead and present the polling results and then potential timeline for a November election, should you choose to go ahead. It's okay. Yeah, there you go. Should you decide to go forward with any of these measures for a November election.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council.
Evening.
So, friendly reminder, we did a, a poll. This is really fresh data. We just finished collecting interviews last week. So, we interviewed 300, little over 302 likely November voters in the city of Emeryville. Our methodology was a combination of phone calls, email to web, and text to web, so we did it a variety of ways, saw a pretty good response, right? Actually got a few more interviews than we did the last time we were here, which is great. And we've done polling for you over the years, so there are a few places where we compare the current poll to past results. A few key findings before we get into the numbers. We see that Emeryville voters continue to be very positive about the quality of life and city government. We asked a series of rating questions about the management of the city budget, the quality of public safety, police and fire, quality of life, as we mentioned, and everything is really positive. The results that we found in the current survey were consistently positive with the results that we've seen in past years. So, folks feel pretty good about, about Emeryville. We see that voters are prioritizing basic city services, such as transportation, parks, safety, street maintenance. And then, as Adina mentioned, we tested a few potential revenue measures, including-
including a cannabis tax that appears viable, and then, a parcel tax and a sales tax, which is, after you see the numbers, you'll see, will require some further consideration on your part. So, one of the kind of warm-up questions that we like to ask is, would you say that to maintain essential city services, the city of Emeryville has a great need for additional funding, some need, a little need, or no real need? This helps us provide context for where voters are in terms of, you know, what they think about, you know, the city's fiscal needs. So, we see over a majority, 58% of voters feel that the city has a need for more funding. 28% of voters say no real need for funding. And then, 14% of voters weren't able to rate, so didn't have an opinion. So, this is a quick overview, and we'll look at each tax individually that we tested. The parcel tax, at 63%, yes; 35%, no. We have the little bar there for the threshold reminder at 66%. The cannabis tax at 80%, total yes; 18%, no. The threshold is 50%. And then, the sales tax at 72 to 27, above the 2/3 threshold. And we should note that the, and you'll see this later, but the way that we worded the sales tax was because it was dedicated to a certain particular priority. Obviously, if you were to do a sales tax that funded general city services, including X, Y, and Z, the threshold would be 50. So, that's, a parcel tax will always be 66% or 66.7%. A sales tax has a little bit more flexibility depending on, you know, how the funds are spent. So, I just wanted to clarify that. So, looking at the parcel tax, what you see in the gray box is what voters saw or read or heard. I won't read the whole thing, but essentially, it's a 15 cent per square foot tax on buildings. We see 63% of voters would vote yes today; 35% would vote no. Just a handful of folks undecided, 2%. So, this is just under the threshold of 66% needed for passage. There's a lot of numbers on this slide, so we won't go into every single one, but essentially, we're showing a demographic and geographic breakdown of the city for some subgroups, you know. For example, you know, there's not really much of a difference between men and women on the issue. There's a little bit of a difference between, you know, Democrats and non-Democrats in the city and things like that. But we sort of see that support is relatively consistent across the board, kind of hovering right around that 2/3 threshold. A little bit better with some voters, older voters, for example. A little bit less with other voters. So, we actually tested the parcel tax back in last year's poll that we did for you. The language changed a little bit. So, what you see on the bottom in the light gray is the old language that we tested. We see, you know, it's essentially unchanged, a little bit lower now than it was in 2017. Some of that, of course, is the margin of error. It's essentially unchanged. A little bit of this, you know, tax fatigue and things, and obviously, just coming hot off the June election, that could be part of it too. But essentially, no difference in support between last year and now. So, looking at the cannabis tax, this would be a tax of up to 5% of grocery receipts on cannabis businesses, generating $2 million annually, funding a variety of things. So, 80% of voters support, 18% oppose, and it needs 50%. So, it's well above the threshold needed for passage. And voters are overwhelmingly supportive of this potential tax. And you can see, this is the case across the board. You know, voters all over Emeryville and all kinds of voters are very supportive of this. We asked the cannabis tax last year. We see support is consistent with what we saw back in 2017. So, looking at the sales tax, as I mentioned, this was put on as sort of, we wanted to test this after the Alameda County Measure A failed to see kind of where Emeryville voters were on funding early childhood education, which is why we are specifically referring to improving education and childcare for kids in Emeryville. We see 72% of voters are supportive, 27% oppose. Just for context, this is pretty close to, you know, roughly what the vote was in the city of Emeryville on Measure A. So, we know that voters are prioritizing this issue. And then, the sales tax by a few different demographic groups, we see, you know, most of them are above the 2/3s. There's a little bit of a difference by geography. So, we wanted to isolate a few of the different priorities that some of these measures would pay for. So, we see that voters are really prioritizing lots of things, especially safety, specifically, police and emergency services, maintaining the Emery Go-Round Service, schools, infrastructure things, streets and roads. And there's more. Again, schools, youth, the Childhood Development Center, bike and pedestrian safety. We also asked about regulating the cannabis industry because we included that in the question related to the cannabis tax. And then, again, a lot of numbers on this slide, but the takeaway is, the attitudes around the priorities have not largely shifted over time. Folks are still, you know, prioritizing much of the same things, public safety, education, transportation, things like that. So, we had additional information about kind of good things that the measures could do. There was a series of these, you know, positive statements, and we asked voters if it was a convincing reason to vote for the measure after hearing these. So, we see, you know, a lot of these potential positive statements really resonate with voters. The fact that Emeryville would get its fair share from the cannabis industry, local funding for local priorities, things like that, very compelling to voters. We also see, you know, other things are compelling too. You know, when you're looking at the threshold, depending on what it is, you know, we want to see this convincing to at least a majority of voters. And all of this additional information is compelling to voters. Nevertheless, we see, the additional information doesn't do a whole lot to move the needle. On the parcel tax, we see support essentially unchanged after the additional information. Similar story for the cannabis tax, a little bit of an increase. And likewise, for the sales tax. Then, we also read some potential opposition messaging, or information, rather. We wanted to see kind of how these measures would withstand, you know, vulnerable pieces. And we see, this is the parcel tax. So, after additional information, it was at 62.36. After we read some, a series of potential opposition information, it goes down to 45.52, so pretty well below the threshold. And then, the cannabis tax, the additional information on the negative side doesn't really do much to erode support. It's still at 80% to 19. And then, with the sales tax, support goes down to 59.39. So, that's all of the data. Happy to answer any questions. And the TBWB folks would normally be here tonight to present their beautiful timeline. And I'm happy to walk through this because I'm familiar enough with the slide on timeline. But maybe I should answer questions on the data first.
Are there questions about the data, Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah. You said the margin of error looked like it was between 5.6 and 7.1 for most of these.
Mm-hmm.
And what's the confidence level?
95%.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Martinez?
So, for the sales tax response, remind me with the timing of the survey, was it clear that Measure A had failed?
Well, to some people, but we did not educate them on, hey, by the way, there was this thing that paid for kind of the same thing, and it didn't pass.
And do you have a professional opinion on if Measure A came back and were to compete with a local measure, how people would respond?
Um, yeah, I think we do. Just speaking from my professional opinion and not speaking to any proprietary data, but I think the voters we see kind of take each measure for what it is. If you care about educating kids, you care about educating kids. So, we don't really see, especially on this issue, that they would compete necessarily. But voters would see kind of, you know, they're sort of buoyed by each other, if you will. Yeah.
Are there other questions? Member Donahue?
Is there, it seems like you asked a lot of questions of the voters. What was the falloff rate of people who started and then did not finish? And did you include those people, or no, they were not a part of the?
So, we only include people who complete the survey from start to finish. It feels very long. It was pretty long. It was about 15 to 18 minutes. And I think one of the ways that we kind of get around that is by offering the survey in multiple modes, you know, phone, web, because it's less burdensome to people when they can just pull out their phone and do it while they're waiting for Bart or whatever. And so, we didn't see any, anything out of the ordinary in terms of, you know, response rate or drop-off than we do on, you know, typical surveys. But we, I'm sure we bugged people during dinner, and they weren't happy about it. But we still got 300 people who responded, which was great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I have questions for city staff, but not for you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do you want me to just look at this timeline real quick, or at least pull it up?
Yeah, you can pull it up.
Okay. So, the, we are on the first blue dot, which says tonight. You know, we're sort of at this red light, green light for some of these measures. Then, you have a, you know, a period of building consensus and public outreach. And then, once you place something on the ballot, as you all know, it turns into an advocacy campaign. And that's where a privately-funded campaign would come in. And so, while TBWB is not here tonight, they essentially help with that middle section of the public outreach, should you decide to put one or more measures on the ballot.
Thank you. Are there any final questions about the timeline? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, what I'd like to do next is open this for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item will have three minutes to do so. Any members of the public who wish to speak, she'll come to the microphone now. Introduce yourself, otherwise, I'll close public comment. Sean's here. Hi, Sean.
Thank you. Sean Luce with Rochambeau Inc. Just want to talk a little bit about the cannabis tax issue. I'd say, as a business, we support it, but it's obviously very important how it's enacted. The details, like all taxes, really matter here. I think what we can all see is that the cannabis market is really formative and immature and just sort of getting itself figured out here in California. And really, I think the bigger story is that we're struggling to gain traction against the illicit market and really only a small portion of cannabis that's grown, bought, consumed, and California's actually sold in the legal, regulated market. And I think a large part of that is heavy taxes in a lot of jurisdictions, at the state level, and then in various local jurisdictions. So, I think we can certainly do the local businesses of Berkeley, or, excuse me, of Emeryville, a favor by, you know, looking at this tax rate and looking at it from a perspective of starting low and going slow, and just moving it, you know, slowly up and starting at a rate that's more manageable than we've seen in some neighboring cities. And something I think in 1% to 2% would be very good for local businesses and would contribute significantly to the general fund, but not be such a price shock. And then, specifically, just like to talk about our business specifically and other dispensaries. You know, we've all, the two dispensaries that have been awarded in the city, we've agreed to community benefits plans. And in our case, that has us already contributing about 2% of gross to the city already. A variety of programs, some that, which go directly to the council for the council to decide how to use the money. Some going direct to other local nonprofits and things. So, you know, I just would hope that also the council would take that into consideration when assessing these additional taxes, that it's not the only burden that we're under as a business in the city. And we want to contribute, and we will, but there's only so much that we can do. So, appreciate that.
Thank you, Sean. Other members?
Hi, Honorable Council. My name is Eric Bruchia. I'm a owner and operator of Versagenics, one of the licensed microbusinesses here in Emeryville. So, the first thing I want to kind of start off with was that, you know, the city of innovation, Emeryville, we want to contribute to all the different programs that you guys have, to make this the best possible city that, you know, we can contribute to it. But we want to also remember that as any industry starts having regulations and it becomes more of a general market, normal margins start to occur. And as, you know, all the numbers that people see on the news about these huge margins that were people getting for, you know, 100%, 200% of whatever they're selling, that starts to diminish as the black market starts to go away. And you start to see, especially with us, we're with manufacturing, smaller margins, 30%, 10% kind of start emerging. And when we have, you know, the sales tax, business taxes, normal taxes that a business has, startup costs, on addition to that, we have 15% excise tax imposed by the city, or, sorry, by the state, city tax, and then yearly revenue-based license fees that the BCC also has to do. And in Prop 64, there is a certain portion of the proceeds that come from that 50% excise tax that goes towards local municipalities for all of their public work systems, including education and public work systems. So, you know, we're not opposed, like I said, to having any kind of a tax rate imposed. But as the BCC is kind of getting all their legislation figured out, and we're adjusting to all these different startup costs and what it takes to actually get a fully functioning cannabis business going, lightening the load a little bit of what it takes for us to be operational and actually continue to operate here in Emeryville. Because, you know, with, in Maslow's hierarchy, you know, you have your basicest essentials covered. And you can start thinking more creatively and start having more innovation and more progression if you have all those bases covered. If you're always focusing on not having enough money, you're not focusing on any change that you can kind of contribute to the industry in general. So, yeah, I mean, what we're basically talking about and, you know, what the letter that we had sent over kind of outlines is all the different tax initiatives that are already currently in place, and that it would alleviate a lot of this hardship and all the constant processes and the constant changes that we have to go through in order to be compliant and operate compliantly within the city. So, I hope you guys take into consideration when you start looking at different tax rates for cannabis businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Other members of the public who wish to speak? Welcome, Nasser.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Nasser Azimi with East Bay Therapeutics, the second dispensary that the city permitted. We also support the notion of cannabis tax, which is why we essentially proactively offered up very hefty community benefits to the city. So, the idea is fine, but in the context of being a startup in the city, we appreciate sort of a slow process. Start low. You don't necessarily have to be slow. If we start making a killing, we're okay to give back to the city in that context. However, during the startup period, the situation is pretty daunting in the context of the investments that have to be made into the city. As a result, the letter was crafted by all the permitted operators in the city to state the fact that we are consistent with the Munis report of starting low and gradually escalating the cannabis tax as the state situation reconciles and consolidation within the industry occurs. And we have some clear direction about where the industry is going to go as a whole and how successful we're going to be in this particular community. So, we appreciate you starting low, and then the pace can basically be tied to how the economy around cannabis industry develops. Thank you.
Thank you, Nasser. Other members of the public who wish to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Samuel with Golden State Cannabis. We're a small delivery service, I think the smallest cannabis business in Emeryville. And we are certainly the smallest in terms of square footage. We have about 196 square feet. Yeah, it's really small.
Your bedroom, what is it?
But we like to call it a king-size canna closet.
Sounds right.
Yeah. So, essentially, although we're the smallest business, I think this, and it's not an exaggeration, I do believe that we may pay the highest rate per square foot of any business in the entire Bay Area. My lease, I'm not allowed to discuss the exact specifics, but it's between $16 and $19 per square foot per month, which puts that at about 200 square feet per year for every space like that. $42,000 per year. And it's myself and one other partner. And, yeah, to give you some perspective, the Emeryville towers that are over here, the beautiful three large towers, bay view, off- the beautiful three large towers, bay view office space out there with a sweeping view of the whole bridge, and San Francisco is about $54 per square foot per year. So our office last year, at this time last year, was just a greasy closet. The, the situation is so dire for cannabis retail space and delivery space, manufacturing space, whatever it is, we were even offered the walk-in freezer at the time when the CUP was getting issued. Because they were trying to get, squeeze a bit more people in there and it was still worth the $3,000 or so. So we also support the cannabis business tax that the city has and we are happy, really grateful to have the opportunity to be here in Emeryville. But we just ask that the council and the mayor and everyone considers the fact that there's a lot of taxes and adversities in the industry that no other industries are facing right now and to keep that in mind. So that's why the seven operators came together to express, hope that the council can agree on something between 1% and 2%, possibly 1.5%, which is slightly higher than what San Francisco has chosen, but lower than what most of the other surrounding cities and competition from cities in the area has chosen, to keep Emeryville competitive and keep it as in contention for being a regional hub for cannabis industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Any other members of the public who wish to comment?
Hello. Ms. Rick. Hi, I'm Chelsea McRill. Thank you all for having us here and discussing this very important matter. I represent Kikoko. Kikoko is an herbal tea cannabis manufacturer in Emeryville. I'm the Chief Development Officer, Chief Development Sorceress is what my business card says. But my job is to really understand what is going on in the market, in the inner workings of the market throughout California. And there's, I think as another member mentioned, there's a public perception that cannabis is, cannabis companies are just reeling in the dough, we're just making tons of money. And the news has done a really good job of propagating this, this myth and this sort of viewpoint. And I think that's what the, a lot of the polls are referencing, is this sort of, is this perspective. And it just really couldn't be different right now. It's so volatile. It's, it's a struggle. Sorry, I'm feeling very passionate about this right now. But cannabis businesses throughout California are, are having issues. And the, the cost of compliance and testing, we paid $25,000 in testing fees a month alone. And it's just, we have unfair conditions such as additional cost of rent. Landlords are, oh, you're a cannabis company, then we'll, we'll jack it up a couple dollars a square foot. And I think, as Sean mentioned, we want a win-win situation. We want to generate money for the city and we want to be successful as businesses. And this is sort of a long-term thing we're looking at here. And so how can we create something that helps us get on our feet now and allows us to grow so that we can generate serious revenues for everybody in the community? I met with one of the largest vertically integrated distributors and manufacturers in this day-to-day. They actually just raised $22 million in VC capital, which is very unusual for cannabis companies to have access to VC money. And they're considering where to bring their next facility. They're looking at Emeryville, Santa Rosa, and San Francisco. And, you know, we talked about, you know, how tax rate affects, you know, just the, the ability to do business. We are so disadvantaged when we are taxed heavily. I mean, people can't, are trying so hard to leave Oakland right now. It's, it's a missed opportunity on the city. So we would love to, all the cannabis businesses in Emeryville, I can speak for them in that we would love to work together on this and, and develop, you know, model out different scenarios financially, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Chelsea. Other members of the public who wish to speak? Hi. Fine, how are you?
Hi, nice to see you.
Afraid to line up.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
I don't know why you're speaking. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks for having us, everybody. And I agree with everything that my co-industry folks have said this evening. We had a meeting last week at our offices. I'm Jennifer Chapin with Kikoko, should probably say that. And I just want to, I want to echo what Chelsea said. It's, you know, it's not, I think we all thought January 1st was going to hit and it was going to be this big green rush, and that's just not the case. And I, and I, we will spend as much time with all of you folks as you need to, folks from the public, to educate them about what's really going on and the issues that we're facing. So it's great when, when polls get taken and, you know, the, the public wants to tax us, but I really ask people to really understand how it's affecting the businesses. And, yeah, just to, to echo Chelsea's sentiment, we, you know, we did not anticipate having to fundraise again this year. We thought that we had raised enough money last year and that the revenues would take us through profitability when we, when we were to fundraise later this year or early next year, but that's not the case. We're in a fundraising cycle right now just because it's, it is, it's just tough doing business right now in terms of, you know, paying our overhead and paying our employees and all the things that we want to do and to stay afloat. We're just, it's, it's a very, very volatile market. And I just think it's really important that the members of, of the, of the city council and, and members of the community understand that. But like everybody else said, we're supportive of a tax, but we hope that there's a strategy and a long-term strategy so that the City of Emeryville can continue to attract businesses like all of us that are doing business now in, in Emeryville. And we think that you have a tremendous opportunity to really be the leader, certainly in the Bay Area, if not California, for really paving the way on, on compassionate business practices to continue to attract businesses like us. Because we love Emeryville, we want to stay here, and we really appreciate the way you embraced us. So thank you very much and we're available anytime. And I just, I encourage a, a really long view like, like a city like Austin has taken when they attract, when they're bringing technology businesses that have left many other cities around the United States to, to, to become Austin businesses. So I, I implore you to take that kind of approach in, in Emeryville here because there's a lot of businesses that would, that would love to come to Emeryville. And now it's just a matter of finding the real estate for them. So thank you for all your time and your work on this. We really appreciate it and we love being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else? No, you got up like five times and you're going to pass?
I'm sure.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay. Public, are you, you have some updates, I know, but not public comment. Okay, are there other public comments? Public comment is now closed. Invite staff to come back up if there's, you're going to go through the questions, I believe, for an update?
Would you like to receive a presentation from Muni Services before we go to the questions?
Would staff like to, or council like to hear from Muni Services about the, the taxing issues, right?
Yeah. Or you just want to go through the questions right away and they, the consultant, it's available to answer questions?
Let's have the consultant be available and we'll go to the questions, please.
Sure. We have three questions for the city council. Would you like me to read the first question or?
I'll take the questions and then, and handle the questions. But what I'd like to do before we answer the questions is I'd like to allow for general comments by members. Since the questions cover whether we wish to place a tax on the ballot and whether we wish to provide direction regarding the tax, you know what, we'll do this. Let's answer the first question, then we'll take general comment before we do question number two. So I'll just go down the dais. Do council members wish to have a discussion about placing a cannabis tax on the November 2018 ballot? Member Donahue?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Discussion, sure.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, discussion.
Okay. All right. So if we're looking to do that, provide direction regarding the tax. So this will be council members' opportunity to discuss cannabis. Please note that we have a question for personal and sales tax next. I'll begin by asking my colleague on the ad hoc cannabis committee, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I first want to start with thanking all of the companies that have leaped into Emeryville with some uncertainty, without knowing exactly what we were going to do in this arena. And I, I value all of you coming in and I hope that there are many more in your cohort based on the actions that we take. This is, it's a very important topic and I want to clarify for the public that we are not setting a tax rate tonight. What we're doing is setting a max rate and talking about the structure and of, of the potential tax. So, you know, we're still in general comments, right? It's, it's, I, I do think that we need to get this out of the way with the public and have them address what max rate should be. But at the same time, I agree that we need to work with the business community to find that sweet spot, to make sure that everyone is able to function and that we're bringing in the many more businesses that Chelsea alluded to that are watching Emeryville very carefully. So I am, I'm, I'm sending my signals tonight about what I would like to do personally. I think this is something that we need to, to accomplish and I think that there is a, an area that we can find where there's agreement. And I admire and I thank the businesses that are here for working with us on these issues and, and taking the leap to, to coming to Emeryville. And I continue to wish to partner with you in a meaningful way to grow your businesses.
So you want to, do you have anything else you want to add on bullet two for right now?
Bullet two? Should I go into it?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So I, I talked to the consultants before our meeting tonight. And my understanding that the, you know, there are varying rates in, very, in different communities in the Bay Area in terms of what they're charging for their taxes. But the max rate standard in the immediate area seems to be about 10%. And I have, our consultant is nodding his head. So this is my spoke signal, that I would propose that we have a max rate of 6%. And that's not the, what we would charge, you know, out of the gate necessarily, but that's the top end of the spectrum. So again, I'm telling you, everyone else is at 10%. I would say that our max would be 6 and that we would work with the business community to establish a rate or a structure that would make sense in the interim. Just to give us the leeway, if we needed to get to 6, if things were looking sunny, we would like that flexibility without having to go back to the voters, which is what we would have to do. That's what I'm throwing out there in terms of a structure. I would propose that it would be a business license tax. And I would propose that it would be based on gross receipts because I think taxing by square footage could potentially punish businesses and it, and it's not related to their income. So I'd rather have it be related, tied to gross receipts. I think that makes more sense, although it provides a little less clarity for the city in terms of what we're getting. I think at this point, we need to make sure that the businesses have a clear picture of, you know, seeing that they're, they're going to be giving a percentage to the city rather than, you know, if they're having a lean month or two months or year, having to pay out a, a certain amount.
Thank you. Councilmember Donahue?
I concur about the business tax license fee approach on gross receipts about this. And I like having a lower max rate than our surrounding cities. And I like what Councilmember Martinez says about working with the businesses to grow their businesses over time. So that makes sense to me. And I just think that there's a lot in this industry that's going to have to be sorted out. And I really think that we should look at this as business in our community and make sure that they are functioning like regular business, that they're not, you know, looked at as some special business that can be taxed into oblivion. No, we have to recognize the realities of being in business.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah. I really appreciate the time and effort that you spent going, putting into this. I think this is complex, looking at all of the polling data and the range of options. I appreciate all of the work you two have really done to cut this down for us. I know that Berkeley recently cut theirs from 10% to 5%. I want to just point out for people at home or who might watch this later on who aren't in the industry, that consumers going to the store are already facing a cumulative state tax rate of 25%. So we're adding on top of that. So Berkeley was at 35% before they chose to cut it. And there's been multiple studies that show that having a significantly higher tax rate does increase the market share for black market marijuana consumption and purchasing. So that is something that we definitely want to keep in mind when setting this rate, is that we're trying to find that really sweet spot between, you know, profitability for businesses, the city, and also avoiding pushing things onto the illegal market. Oakland is currently at 10%, I believe. Richmond's at 5%. San Jose is at 10%. And somebody said something that San Francisco changed theirs recently. I knew they had not initially chosen to add on a local one. Could someone clarify that for me?
Come to the microphone.
Good evening. Fran Manci at Muni Services. Our understanding is they're strictly stick, going with the business license tax, which their average rate is approximately 7%. So there is not a special cannabis tax that I'm aware of.
Okay. So there's no additional?
Not that I'm aware of, right.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying. So, yeah, I'm interested in doing a cap lowering, lower than our surrounding neighbors. I might think like 5% just to really declare like, we're not even going to touch what they do because, you know, Berkeley have to 5%. We won't go past what Berkeley does.
Berkeley's max rate is still 10. Their effective rate is 5.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we can really be strategic and I really want to get into that conversation. I, I feel you, the local industry. I work in an industry that I think is currently about three years behind where cannabis is right now, except for its blockchain and nobody knows what it is yet. And we don't know what the state or federal regulations are or are going to be. So I totally understand the pain that you're in right now and I want to make sure we can work with you and understand how to help attract more businesses here and put up that flag and say, we get what you're going through and Emeryville's open for business.
Thank you. Councilmember Pats?
I want to echo a lot of what my colleagues say, but I want to go all the way back to the poll and say, you know, you don't need a margin of error. You guys were dead on in the last election, so good job on that. This is a syntax and I always struggle with those. And I'm kind of just personally opposed to them. I feel like we put extra taxes in place because polling data is going to tell us you're not going to lose going up against a vice. And that rubs me the wrong way. That said, I don't want to leave money on the table. You know, if our neighbors are taxing you, I think we have to find that sweet spot. So you come here, feel welcome, but we still get our, our beaks wet. Keep going down these analogies. So, hey, he brought up Maslow, I can wet my beak. I'm trying to figure out where profit and THC are on that pyramid. So that said, I think I want to keep it low. I think, Member Martinez has done the background on this, 10% seems very high as a max rate. And I think coming in at, at six, coming in at six as a max rate is a, is a, is a nice welcome mat. And then, you know, the effective rate, starting out, I'd be much more comfortable, you know, somewhere about half that. And I think there's a magic number in there. And so I think I, you use the analogy of smoke signals. Be very clear that-
I did not mean a pun.
But I think, I think the businesses need to know what they're looking for. And I think that's where we're going to be coming in at. For myself, I'm not speaking for the rest of you, but for me, I would only support going, you know, low, just because, again, I, I struggle with this idea that we're going to tax people because it's easy, as opposed to any sort of equity. You know, sort of like the lottery, we're taxing people. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I want to begin by thanking in particular Councilmember Martinez, who has for over a year and a half now worked very closely with me on this issue. I want to thank all the people who are here today, who I've had the privilege of meeting and working with from the industry and learning from. And as Chair of the Budget Committee in the city, I spend a lot of time buried in finances and taxes, really trying to understand and make the city's fiscal future as positive and sunny as it can be. And so Councilmember Martinez and I had a discussion, we've been caucusing on this item for a while now. And I want to add some additional things that we've discussed, sharing the discussion points here. sharing the discussion points here as ideas that we have about this. So, she talked about a max rate, but I also want to reiterate things that I've heard my colleagues all say, that I think are really important to be explicit about. I have learned through this process that the industry is going through challenges in competing with the black market, and I understand and appreciate that. And if the goal in California is to create a viable legal market, that requires us to make some adaptations that other cities have not made. Emeryville, if you came to the state of the city at 5:00, and I know none of you cannabis folks did, Nasser did, Nasser did. Nasser gets a point. But we talked about being a community of innovation, and the fact is that Emeryville has secured a lot of its business leaders, its retail hub, a lot of these things in the past, because we were nimble, because we innovated, and because we weren't Berkeley, and we weren't Oakland. And I don't want us to be Berkeley or Oakland. And I, you know, in, in learning more about what all the different segments in the vertical structure of the cannabis industry are doing, is, although I support a gross receipts tax and not a square footage tax, I also don't think that all segments of the industry should be taxed the same. I think that the reason why you pay $25,000 a month for testing is because there's a total dearth of people who are available right now to do testing, and so, people can't get products tested to get them on the shelves in time in order to get them out the door to make money. And so, what we need to do is incentivize people at all segments of the vertical integration chain to be here in Emeryville, to actually create that locus for the industry where there is a symbiotic relationship between all the parts of the industry that make it work, because that reduces other costs, like the transportation of the product from the manufacturing facility to the testing facility to the distribution center. And so, one of the things Councilmember Martinez and I have talked about is, how, how can we do that and still come up with a ballot initiative this year that makes it clear that we, we do intend to represent the, the people of Emeryville and ensuring that we have an industry here that also contributes to the city? I think the state screwed up very clearly in, in the way they've handled parts of the implementation of Prop 64. I think Prop 64, for all the things that it did well, was a loser on tax rates. And although I understand the, the state's belief that it would use that as a cash cow, I think it is backfiring on the state. And so, the challenge is, that puts the challenge in the hands of the cities when it comes to local taxes, because although we do get, you know, a portion of the excise tax back, we really don't get much of what the state gets. We don't. It's earmarked for all kinds of little bells and whistles and ponies and unicorns that the state had in mind when they did this thing and negotiated the deal. But the reality is that cities don't get that much. And I think when you look at the future of the cannabis industry, I think that we need to make, we need to make variated rates for the different parts of the cannabis industry. So, I think that we should have a, a flat rate or a no rate to incentivize testing, testing facilities to open a business here and get in here in the door for the first two years without a tax on them perhaps, so that they can actually be established and become part of the cannabis industry here in the community. I think that we should look at how we manufacture different, or how we tax, tax different types of manufacturing entities. So, those who were smoking a doobie in the 60s or 70s aren't the same consumer as those who are going to eat a gummy or a brownie in today's market, or have cannabis tea at a hat party. The reality is that the user is changing, and if we want to be on the forefront of who the user is in California, we have to look at where that trend is going, and I think we need to tax incentivize those segments of the market that are actually going to succeed in the long term and overcome the hurdles that will be here while the black market is enduring. I also think that when you look at the national scene, you know, the current administration won't be there forever. Canada legalized cannabis nationwide recently, and the United States will do that. The United States will do that. We already see the, the lack of enforcement of federal laws for, you know, for cannabis in, in a number of places, and I think that's going to be a trend. And I think one of the things that California is going to have to reckon with at some point is whether or not it is going to sit on a 15% sales tax rate for cannabis industries when Nevada will be at 1% in five to 10 years. That's not going to work for California. And so, whether it's today or whether it's in some period of time, it's going to need to change, and that goes back to Councilmember Martinez's opening comment, because I saw a couple shocked faces at a max rate of 6%. But the truth is that it costs the city money to run a ballot initiative, and we need to understand as partners between the business community and the city, that the taxes will change at the state level, and federally they will change in the future too. And the burden that I think you have today won't be there in 10 years. I feel very confident about that. And I think that that is a place where, it doesn't mean we should repeal and replace one tax with an equal and different tax, but I think that business partners who have been in this, in this work together after five or 10 years should have the ability to say, listen, you don't have that burden anymore, but you should give a little more to the city that helped make you possible. So, I think creating that max cap space that she referred to is not about saying we're going to go to a ballot and say 6% to people, and that's what we're going to do on January 1. I think it's talking about what is that long-term thing, as Chelsea put, I wrote it down in quotes, that long-term thing, because that is exactly, that is exactly how I know the two of us, and I think all of us up here are thinking about this, is it is a long-term thing. But we have to be, we have to think about all the, the factors in that long-term thing, and that includes the changes at the state and federal level that I think are inevitable. So, if, I, I have a proposal, which is I believe that Councilmember Martinez has accurately reflected what I think an appropriate ballot measure should be, having had the conversation I think we, we've had up here so far with just initial comments, which is that we should put out a, a simple ballot measure that operates as a license tax on gross receipts, that it should be capped, and that what we should do in the interim period of time is that the city council should conduct a study session, and we should actually create a draft ordinance or regulation that outlines what the taxes will be on each of the segments of the cannabis industry that will be ready to go and implement and be voted on January 1 if a ballot measure is passed in November, so that the cannabis industry doesn't feel like they're just sitting in wait, waiting for a ballot measure to pass, but you actually can provide detailed, industry-specific, totally appropriate input as to how the tax rates are specific. I've met with Alexis Podesta in Sacramento. I have sat down with folks at the Consumer Services and Business Office and talked about this, and I've looked at tax rates in other municipalities, and I agree Santa Rosa is one that I really like, and I do believe we should compete with communities like Santa Rosa to be the hub. We are geographically centered to be the most competitive. Santa Rosa is not, so why should we let Santa Rosa beat us out? Now, I think you pay a small premium for being here versus Santa Rosa, but I think that that is in the details. And so, I'm going to stop talking at this point, but I just wanted to highlight a number of these details, because those are, those are all things that I think go into creating a thoughtful and constructive tax process that really allows an industry to succeed while at the same time protecting the community and its, its needs. So, with that, I want to return to council discussion and Councilmember Martinez.
So, thank you, Mayor. I, I want to support the direction that you've suggested, and I, I want to thank you for your foresight in talking about the testing industry. That is something that immediately when I saw Prop 46, written into it was, 64, sorry. I did not partake. 64, that there was, there was a mandate for testing from facilities that didn't exist. And that is something that I think Emeryville could succeed at, is attracting those companies that would relieve a burden on your industry. We already have a biotech corridor. We already have many spaces that would be perfect for that type of business, and the testing that's happening in small facilities here that are overburdened, that's happening in Colorado, should be happening here in Emeryville. So, I, I agree with the direction that the mayor has, has outlined, and I, I invite and I welcome the industry to work with us in study session and find those sweet spots for each of you.
How do other council members feel about the proposal that Councilmember Martinez and I have put out?
I feel good about it.
I support it.
You support it, Mr. Pats? Okay. So, we are being asked to give staff direction this evening, and Councilmember Martinez, would you like to outline the direction?
Sure. I will recap. The first question is, does the city wish to place cannabis tax measure on November 2018 ballot? Yes, we do. If the city council wishes to place cannabis tax measure on the November ballot, please provide direction regarding rates and rate structure for development of ballot question. In terms of rates, I said 6%. Is that, and again, just in context, this is, there's a cap of 10% in our surrounding communities. This is a cap. This is, we're asking for some wiggle room from our industry members, so that in, working with you, that is something that we could get up to possibly at some point. That is not the tax rate that we're trying to establish today. In terms of the rate structure, we're asking that this be a business license tax, and that we're asking that it's based on gross receipts. In conjunction with that, we're asking staff to schedule a study session in which we can further get into the details of the tax structure.
May I add a couple of things to that?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to add on that about changing taxes in the future. There are ways in, in, through the study session process to, just as examples, that the tax rate can be changed by the city council only with a supermajority vote of the city council, or that any tax change that would be voted in a future would not, would be delayed in implementation by six or 12 months. Things that create predictability and opportunity for the industry to know something is coming and to participate in that conversation meaningfully. So, I just want to flag that as, as something when we talk about that, what we mean. I also want to go back to a comment I, I failed to address, which relates to community benefits by dispensaries. I believe that a tax is an alternative to a community benefit, and that taxes, the community benefit existed because we could, do not have a tax because it required a voter approval, and we did not know the outcome of Prop 64 at the last election for this. And so, by the time cannabis was legalized and we had an industry here as of January 1, we asked all cannabis dispensaries to contribute voluntarily as part of their application to a community benefit program, and I appreciate both of the dispensaries here tonight who do that. But in no, no way do we believe that a tax rate on a dispensary should be in addition to the community benefit, that the community benefit exists so long as there is not a tax, and a tax is supplanting what the community benefit was called to do. That's our-
I agree with that.
So, is that sufficient guidance for the city staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I do have a couple of questions based on your last statement.
Yeah.
So, regarding setting the tax rate, did you want to bake into the ordinance that would be going before the voters that any change to that tax rate would have, would require a supermajority of the council?
How do council members feel? Do we want to give that, that should, he's correct that that should be in the ballot measure if we're going to allow ourselves to change it?
I'm comfortable with that.
Versus just a, versus just a simple majority. And the structure that I am envisioning proposing to the council when I write the ordinance is that you would, the ordinance would set the tax rate at the maximum of, what I'm hearing is 6%, and that the council, by later resolution, would establish the tax rate for that particular business, and that you can change that tax rate again by resolution, you know, as you deem fit. So, if the-
By, by a supermajority.
And is, is, I want to make sure I'm hearing the direction from council about that.
Can I, can I ask for a couple of variations to be brought back to us? One that requires a supermajority vote after, 12 months after the adoption of an ordinance by the voters, so that we have the time without requiring a supermajority vote to at least select the initial rates, and that subsequent changes after a date certain could be changed only by a supermajority. And alternatively, alternatively, what it would look like if it didn't have a supermajority requirement in it.
Okay.
Which just, which then just leaves the city council the opportunity to change it, but I'd just like to see what both of those look like. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, but just up to the cap, right?
But just up to, of course, up to the cap.
So, it's, to be clear for people watching, if we, if we were to raise that cap, we'd have to go back to the voters.
Yeah. That's why we're setting it where we're setting it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, supermajority, I want to make sure I'm capturing what, what you just said, Mayor. Is a supermajority to change the tax rate aft, and I'm sorry, after adoption?
After, well, well, so the, the way we're doing this is we're not putting all these detailed rates in this ordinance, but the city council, by virtue of the ballot measure, needs to be authorized to create an established fee schedule, and one of the things I think we should contemplate is a step-up schedule, where we say in 2019 and 2020, the rate will be this, and in 2021, the rate will be changed by a half percent or something, so that we've given people that load time, you know, to, to enter in at a lower rate, but we've, we don't have to consistently change it. I think we should be able to set a schedule-
Oh, yeah.
-for our first, the first few years, and then have some window of time after that, where any future changes to that predictable thing that we've negotiated or put out through the study session can only be changed by a supermajority.
Okay. And so, in the ordinance that would be brought before you and put before the voters, you would like to see that step up in the ordinance and stuff?
I don't think you need to put all-
Not the actual step?
No, not, you don't need, yeah, you don't need to put it all in there. What you need to do is give us some authorizing language that allows us to set the rate by a certain date, and, or a period of dates for rates, that we can only change them after a certain date by a, a higher vote threshold. So, I'm comfortable saying, you know, I'm just throwing something out there as a, as an example, but like, the city council-
I had a friendly amendment.
Well, I'm not, I haven't made a, I haven't made a motion on anything. I'm, I'm, I'm simply proposing that we could set rates for a period of up to five years in our first ordinance, for example, and then after those five years, they will, they'll, they're fixed for five years, and that after five years, they can only be changed with a supermajority vote. That's kind of how I'm contemplating it.
Okay.
Yeah, what's your idea?
Well, just that we, it would take a supermajority to raise the rate, but a council majority to lower.
We can explore that option as well when we discuss the language. So, it, it just, a sample, a sample, a sample sentence that would accommodate Councilmember Donahue's suggestion. Are there other suggestions or comments? No. We feel we've captured everything, staff?
Give me just one minute, please.
Sure.
We should have hold music.
Okay. I think I have what I need. Thank you.
You do. All right. Well, I thank everybody who came out for item 12.2. This closes that agenda item.
Oh, no, we still have to talk about parcel taxes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We are not done. We have one more bullet left. Does the council wish to consider parcel and sales tax revenue measures for future elections? Councilmember Pats?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Medina?
Future elections, consider it tonight or ever consider in the future?
Sure.
It's just vaguely worded.
It's made it harder for me to think about.
I mean, not tonight. I don't think we need to consider this for November. I'm open to considering anything in the future.
Councilmember Donahue?
Yeah, not for November.
Councilmember Martinez?
Not for November, but future elections. You know, what I saw in the polling data is that our community continues to be proud of and concerned with public safety, so I want to make sure that we have options open in the future should there be a need with all the new housing that we have coming online to increase service levels.
And my only comments on this item are I agree that it's not appropriate for the November election this year. I do think it's important to remind the public that while we've made a lot of very good changes to combat things like the increase in pension costs and public safety, growing public safety need, there will be a need to identify additional revenue sources in the future to stem off that problem. We're hoping that the cannabis tax, if done reasonably and successful in, in bringing in businesses, will actually be a source for that, and that that will help alleviate some of that issue. And Councilmember Martinez and I tasked the consultants with exploring a sales tax measure to target early childhood education to help close the subsidy gap on the ECDC permanently, and we contemplated a quarter cent sales tax. My understanding, and I just want to answer from the city attorney and the finance director on record here tonight, is that, is the city capped out at its sales tax up, its sales tax?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, we, the county has additional authority still, but we do not have additional authority as a city?
Yes.
Okay. So, on this front, there are two things I would just like to briefly ask for council's level of interest or support for something I'm willing to do. I've had conversations with Supervisor Chan's office, who ran Measure A in June, which barely failed, and they are open to accepting proposed language revisions to the plan that was developed and adopted by the county supervisors. They do intend to run this measure again, I believe, and they are open to accepting amended language from us that would benefit the city of Emeryville in ways it did not. Is council supportive of authorizing me to continue those conversations on our behalf to try to get language introduced that would make Emeryville more profitable for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And the second question is, the city of Berkeley is part of a bill right now that would expand the city of Berkeley, along with South Lake Town and some other cities, to expand their sales tax cap. sales tax cap. Not an immediate need of ours, but the Tax and Rev Committee Chair told myself and Townsend that if we wish to expand our sales tax cap, we could run a bill next year to do that as long as it had a specified purpose. So in the event that we aren't successful this fall, at a preliminary level, to speak to authors in the fall, are people supportive of exploring the opportunity for legislative authority to expand our sales tax or not?
Yes.
Councilmember Medina?
I'm not comfortable having that conversation right now before I see how, how the voters feel about additional taxes in fall.
Okay, that's fine. Others?
I'm open to that.
Councilmember Pitts? Okay, so I think that that's staff. We've heard that what we're going to do, we'll work on trying to amend the county's measure to include Emeryville in a better way. Okay, with that, I will now officially close item 12.2. Thank you for that. And the last item on the agenda is 13, which is Department Head Reports. And I'll start with Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Mayor Bouders, members of the city council. This is my monthly report to you on the actions of the planning commission at their last meeting, which was on June 28. I'd like to note that the appeal period, the 15-day appeal period for the June 28 meeting expires this coming Friday, July 13. So if you wish to appeal any of these items to yourselves, this would be your opportunity, opportunity to do that, those items that are appealable, that is.
And which, just to be clear, which subletters are those?
Well, it's part of A and B.
Okay, so let me just start there. On the Ocean View...
Can I go through the items first?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I would note that we, as of June 28, we had one vacancy on the commission, and Commissioner Thompson was absent from the meeting, so we had a total of five commissioners present. On the Ocean View Town Homes, that was approved by the commission on a 5 to 0 vote. That is a recommendation to the city council because that project needs to come to you for final approval. So that's on the conditional use permit and the design review. That is scheduled to be heard by you at your next meeting on July 24. They also approved a tree removal permit for two street trees. That is not directly tied to the use permit and design review application, so that does not automatically come to the council for approval. Their, the commission's decision on the street tree removal permit is final unless it is appealed within the 15-day appeal period. The Sherwin-Williams Surface Parking Lot item was approved on a 4 to 0 vote with Council, with Chair Donaldson recused on that item, and that is appealable to you within the 15-day appeal period. The Shellmount Way General Plan Amendment item was continued to a future meeting. Less than two hours before the hearing, we got a letter from a law firm basically challenging the sequoet determination, and we felt that it was prudent to continue the item to allow us time to consider the issues they had raised and to consider a response, so that was continued. And then finally, the commission held a study session on the proposed 244-unit residential project at 5850 Shellmount Way. And once again, the tree removal permit for Item A is appealable to you, and the Sherwin-Williams Surface, Surface Parking Lot, Item B, is appealable to you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I want to start with Item B. Does anyone wish to appeal the Sherwin-Williams Surface Parking Lot?
No.
Okay. On the Ocean View Town Homes, does anyone wish to appeal the tree removal permit?
No.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yeah, you know, since we're having to hear the other items, might as well hear the tree item as well.
Okay, I have one vote to hear the tree item. Does anyone else wish to hear the tree item on appeal?
May I clarify something about the timing of this?
Yes, you may, please.
If you do decide to appeal the tree removal permit to yourselves, the next step in the process would be for you to set a hearing date for the appeal. That would occur at your next meeting on July 24, and then more than likely, the, the hearing would be set for the September 4 meeting or some other time in the future. So if that were appealed, you would be hearing the conditional use permit and design review at your next meeting. However, the tree removal permit would not come back to you until September for a decision.
Understood. Is there anyone else who's interested in hearing the tree removal? I see no here, and these are nos. I agree with you, actually, that the tree removal, mostly because I don't, my understanding is that there's no driveway on the front of the house, and so I'm not understanding why we're removing the trees. I understand one of them is not well, but I don't understand the removal of the other tree, so, but we don't have three votes to hear it, so it's okay. It's okay. I'm just, just, that's my, is that, is that the, your understanding as well is they want to remove both, but only one of them is sick?
Well, it's not, the applicant is not requesting to remove them specifically. It's on the recommendation of the city arborist.
We will not appeal that. We don't have three votes to do that. So we will hear the, the town homes for the demolition on July 24.
That's correct.
Is that your end of your report?
That concludes my report.
Okay, are there other department heads who wish to make a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. A very brief one, just tomorrow, I'll be sending out to you a notice of construction work, which a few days later, we'll be posting on the website and sending out as a newsflash, among other things. And it's for about one-third of the Emeryville streets will be getting some kind of a surface treatment, either slurry seal or a grind and repave over the next few months, starting in August. You approved one of those contracts tonight, and you approved the other contract, Phase 1, last month. And we'll be working, outreach, reaching out to some of the target audiences, those most impacted. We've been working with PG&E to try to get them out of our way. But we'll also be putting information on the website and using Nextdoor and Twitter to try to reach out to people, let them know what's going on, as well as this notice will go out to like 10,000. We'll do the mailer to the entire city. So you'll see a significant change. You will see some traffic problems for a few weeks along Powell and Christie, but I think you'll like the improvement once we get done, and we'll do our best to minimize the impact.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Andrew? Yes.
So Andrew, we've been through this before with the Public Works Department, and I, I had a couple of recommendations after the last round, and I hope that you will consider them or might be able to accommodate them. One was that if there are big changes to the plan, that those be accessible online via maps of what streets are going to be closed at each time. We had an unfortunate incident where, like, a square of a block was blocked off at one point, and there was, I had a neighbor who had, has some disabilities, who came home from the airport and had to park one or two blocks away from her home when she can't actually walk a great distance. So this wouldn't have been an issue if she had received proper notice, but be, because of delays, the contractor was coming in and out of the neighborhood, and folks really didn't know when the slurry seal was going to happen. The, the dates just kept on extending and extending on the street signs, so people just had no idea. And so I had, had some feedback for the Public Works Department at that time. We were under a different director, so I hope you will, will take my, my feedback and understand those concerns, but I, I'm very hopeful that this is, that we're going to have a very different oversight process, and we're not going to have, you know, while folks will be inconvenienced, that they'll at least know it.
I, I appreciate your comments. We're, we're going to be doing our best. Like I said, we're on one-third of the streets in the entire city, so hopefully we won't have that incident. That's why we're mailing this out ahead of time, why we're going to have regular updates on the website and try to point everybody back to that site, as well as the contractor. And it states that here is three days prior to the work in any particular area, we'll be making notices, door hangers, et cetera, out in the particular areas affected, and we're going to try to minimize that activity that you said where it gets posted, and then the streets get blocked, and then it gets delayed for a while. That does happen, though, due to weather conditions and things like that, but we'll do our best to not have that situation happen again.
And I would just add on that when I lived on Bodry Street, when we did the last major round of this, I was literally getting in my car when, was it Vanguard was the name of the contractor? I think that was their name, Van, whoever was the people doing the sidewalks. They literally started, showed up right as I was getting in my car and put the street sign up, the placard, the thing in the construction zone, and it was 4:30, and they put it, Charlie was on this email, and they put it up for the next morning. And I called the then Public Works Director and said, they put this up, and it says 72 hours notice, and they're putting it all down Bodry and 55th Street right now, and it's for tomorrow. And he disputed that, and I actually took a video of the people going down Bodry Street doing it. So it wasn't a staff issue, but the contractor did not give notice. Doesn't matter what we put online, if people don't have something out where their car is. And I had a neighbor who lived, who had a wheelchair ramp in it, in a wheelchair, who could not get up the next morning and get out of her house because everything was blocked off. So we did have a very bad experience, and that wasn't on you, and that wasn't on our staff necessarily, but we do need to have that oversight piece. It's very important. Thank you for that update. Other updates? Okay, there's a future agenda item request from council members. Councilmember Pitts? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, I'm, I've agendas this for transportation, but I think we should expect it to come to council in September. A recommendation about what to do about scooters, which you may have been seeing appearing all over. Yes, Christian, we're doing a scooter ordinance if you so choose. Yeah, so we'll be taking that up at our next transportation meeting, so expect a recommendation coming around September, if that's okay with everyone.
Yes. That's fine. Others?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, did we have something from Sustainability Committee?
To agendas?
Yes.
I'm going to come back to you, because I don't remember what it is. Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Councilmember Donahue?
No.
I have one item, which is, it's just a conversation we need to have, and whether it is more appropriate for closed or open session, I will leave that to the determination of staff, but as we know, there is some concern about the lobby at the police station, and it's a conversation that needs to be had here because it relates to the building official, it relates to the public's safety at the police station, and I just think it's a necessary thing as a council that we must pay attention to. Do people support an agenda item for that?
Yes.
And Mr. Holgerson, do you have something to say about that?
I was going to say the council will get a report tomorrow regarding that matter.
Perfect. So can we put an agenda item to have, whether, if it's more appropriate on closed session, that's fine, but on a, on a conversation about it, because I think we need to be transparent with the public about what we're doing about it at some point. Okay, and what was your item?
From Sustainability, we recommend that we consider our involvement in PACE programs.
Oh, yes, that's, that, thank you very much. We would like to revisit, and Andrew, did we determine whether, we said that was going to be fall, right? Did we, were you at that part of the conversation at Sustainability on Monday?
No, I think he came after. Nancy said falls.
Okay, so early fall to revisit the number of PACE programs we have. How do folks feel about that?
Pace providers?
Pace providers, not the JPA itself, but the providers that we have due to consumer protection issues. So we'll have a discussion of that in the fall. Okay, seeing and hearing no other future agenda items, Madam Clerk, the time is 9:55. The meeting is adjourned. I'm off to the airport.